Is the, is the online meeting all set now? So the SAP is running and then whoever? Good, I see a bunch of online things. Good.
And you have the volume up?
Okay.
Check it, check down at the bottom in the right-hand corner. Down a little bit more to the left. Right there. Is that 100%?
Can you X that out? Because I'm going to ask who's ever online whether they can see us or whether they can hear us. So I'm going to ask that right now. Can anybody online? John or, or, or anybody online? Can you hear me? And if you can, just wave.
I can hear you.
Okay, John, good. And we can, John can hear you and see you finally. Nice. Okay, because that's what we're testing right now to see about audio and video.
Yes, I have both. And I had audio all along because the picture just came on.
So somebody just pushed a button. I don't know whether it was Libby or, or Brandon. So just leave that alone right now because we're on, we're on okay.
Can Alex hear us?
Can anybody else? Donnie, can you hear me? Video just went out. Or do they control that or do you guys?
They control that on their end.
They do? Okay.
This is Alex, I can hear you.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Anybody online right now? Anybody online?
Suzanne.
Suzanne, okay, good. Ray Stapleton, can you hear me? Nice. Okay, good.
I saw him clicking in.
Okay, good. Okay, we all set? So whoever can come online is online, Brandon. So we aren't pushing any buttons and haven't any problems yet, right? Okay. We haven't gotten to healthcare anyway yet, but we're going to. I'm going to call the meeting to order. Not sure what time it is. My phone's off. 6:38, okay. Are there any comments from the board on topics not on the agenda?
No.
Nothing go around the table? Nothing? Not on the agenda. I have two things. Brandon, and we'll get to him, but he's kind of a little bit busy taking minutes. But, and I think it's very important. I think he had a brief description of our tax quarterly payment that we just came in. And we do have, I have asked for a, when I came in today with Brandon, because I'm getting information about COVID-19 around town, not directly but indirectly, I've asked for an emergency management meeting on Thursday. He set that up for 6 o'clock. It's going to be here. It's CC'd copied. Everybody, don't know if you guys got it yet, but it's going to deal with, we're gathering input from each entity about how they're handling what's been going on. The library, the food shelves, Martin Hall, which I already know what's going on, highway, so anything. We're trying not to close down, but we're, we're, for instance, the food shelves are delivering food and not letting people in so much. That's a good move. I'm not sure about the library. We're going to ask each entity to come in. And the school is coming. There's been some positive tests. There's been some negative tests. So we're going to ask everybody for input about what is going on with theirs and try to separate that from hearsay, which is hard to do right now. So that's Thursday. So Brandon, a minute or two, because I think it's relative when we start talking about discussions later on and the two things. Can you give us a brief update on your report? And it's not on the agenda, but I think we all need to know about the findings of our tax quarterly payment that came in on the 18th, which was a week ago.
Yep.
And I'd like you to combine that with the first quarter if you could.
Got it. That's, the Town Manager Report is actually Agenda Item Number 5. When I told you it wasn't on the agenda earlier, I, that was a mistake.
Okay, sorry.
So it is there.
Okay. So do you want to take it up then? Well, we're going to take up minutes now?
Yep.
Or, okay. Let's go to the minutes then of November 16th. Need a motion to pass that, please.
To approve.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to approve the minutes of November 16th, 2020. Any discussion? All set? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The next is the healthcare, Brandon, but can you give me a brief, a brief outline of that? I think it's relative to our financial position.
Yes.
It's not, I'm just asking for a couple of lines. You may have an in-depth one that you want to do a little bit later or?
All right. So if you look in your packet, there's actually a paper copy. It's also electronic on, on the iPads under Town Manager Report. The reason I'm asking you to pull this out is because there's a chart here that you can look at as I'm going through the numbers. So for the first, the first chart shows the first and second quarterly tax payments from FY '18 to FY '21. In FY '18, there were $53,896 in delinquent taxes for the first quarter and $108,67 in delinquent taxes for the second quarter. In FY '19, there were $58,365 in delinquent taxes for the first quarter and $118,575 in delinquent taxes for the second quarter. In FY '20, there were $44,338 in delinquent taxes for the first quarter and $109,87 in delinquent taxes for the second quarter. In FY '20, there were $53,149 in delinquent taxes for the first quarter and $127,799 in delinquent taxes for the second quarter. The second chart shows the amount the town billed and will bill for the third and fourth quarters between FY '18 and FY '21. In FY '18, the town billed $1,343,044 for the third quarter and $1,352,376 for the fourth quarter. In FY '19, the town billed $1,511,702 for the third quarter and $1,527, uh, $1,527,201 for the fourth quarter. In FY '20, the town billed $1,511,120 for the third quarter and $1,565,633 for the fourth quarter. In FY '21, we will bill $1,625,000 for the third quarter and $1,653,000 for the fourth quarter. I broke this down also into percentages. There is currently $180,948 in delinquent taxes for the first and second quarters. In FY '21, the town received 97.35% of taxes billed for the first quarter and 93.63% for the second quarter. In FY '20, the town received 97.66% of taxes billed for the first quarter and 94.24% for the second quarter. So between FY '20 and FY '21, as far as our financial position for tax revenue for the first and second quarters, there's a .46% difference between FY '20 and FY '21 for the first and second quarter.
And without getting into percentages, I think the number that we all need to keep in our minds right now is the difference between FY '20 and '21. It's approximately, you know, the rough math is $27,000. Remember that a penny on the tax rate is 31 or 2,000, I think, maybe 33,000. So we've slipped behind. It, it, again, it's at 153 to 180 now, year over year on the first two quarters of not collecting. Okay? That's not, that's not the people that are also in delinquency. This is just the, the year-to-year payments. So I think we need to keep that in mind when we start moving ahead. I mean, it's a little bit, it's about a penny that's moving that way. And somebody told me once, so when we get into the discussion of healthcare and the fire, I'd like everybody to remember because I, because when we take these subjects up one by one, it's really hard to choose them and then buy them. And then it might cost the town a little bit more money because it seems like the last one in line in the budget presentation may get the ax and that's really unfair. So I don't know, I just, we all need to keep that in mind about when we move along here and we make decisions, and I hope we do, that it, that it might want to be a little bit shared somehow or somehow measure that out. So without any more, wasting any time, let's get on to number four, which is the healthcare. Brandon, you've given us some data. I don't know if you want to do this or Suzanne or, or one of the girls or, I don't know. What do you want to do?
So this is the same data that we were, we were looking at last week. There's been no changes to the data. However, we did, we did conduct a survey across town for all the employees that are opting in for healthcare. And they, they made their decision and, you know, basically the survey indicated which plan they want. So if you have that data, if this select board is interested.
Has the, has the board gone, gone over this at all or has, have they had discussions or have they done any work about it? Or what is the, I, you know, I presently, let's, let's cut to the chase as much as we can. The present plan, can you describe for that for me, Brandon? It's a high deductible health savings account where the town forwards a certain amount of money for a single, a two-person or a family plan, right? And then, then there's a premium and then there's actually a co-pay on, on the employees, it's deducted from their payroll, right?
Yes.
So go, let's outline what is. And then the next question, the follow-up to that is, is that plan offered again now? Because sometimes they aren't, sometimes they're not.
Yeah, so the town's currently under the Gold III HD/HP plan. And that deductible is 3,000 and 6,000, so 3,000 for a single and 6,000 for family. The town currently front loads an HSA, $4,000 at the beginning of the year for a family or, or 2,000 for a single.
4,000 for a family?
Yep, and 2,000 for a single. And we also, if an employee qualifies for healthcare and decides to opt out, then we pay $10,000 for a family plan and the number similarly decreases as you get to see.
As I recall, I've seen the policy where it's 50% of the premium.
Correct.
Up to that cap, but it depends if you're a single or a two-person and the family is the cap.
Yes.
Because the family plan is above $20,000. I've seen the language in that. It's up to 50% of the premium.
Correct.
Current. So does everybody follow along? And the top of this sheet or it's on your computer or whatever, where we've got this chart right here and it's the current plan is at the very top. And then the other plans, the subsequent choices are below. The, the only thing that I'll generically throw out there is MVP is the carrier, not Blue Cross. That's just a fact.
So this year, what we did is we increased the employee contributions by 9.5%. So what we did was to make the Platinum Plan and the Gold III HD/HP plan, even as far as the employer contribution goes, we increased the percentage to 14% for the Gold III HD/HP. So if the select board decides to remain with that plan, we would have three opt-outs, $42,000 in HSAs, and we would have a total of 276,000 for the total cost, employer contribution of $247,974, employee contribution of $28,647. The Platinum Plan, on the other hand, employees would pay 9.5%. Their total contribution would be $21,534. The employer contribution would be $247,000, which is the same as the Gold III with the opt-outs and the HSA. If the select board decides to go with the Platinum Plan, there is no HSA included with that plan. And that's all I have.
Paul?
Just question that survey. What, what was the survey's results?
On the survey, all of the employees in town that were surveyed chose the Gold III HD/HP with the HSA. So that's the 3,000, single, 6,000, family.
Okay, so which one is that under the new? Because it's a disregard the all. Is it number one? Is it number two or is it number three?
It's number one.
It's number one. So the employees, okay, hold on. Let me finish my thought. So the, and they're not numbered, so I want to make sure everybody's on the same page as I am. So the, even though they've, and I don't want to speak for them, I hope they all jump in and yell at me if I'm wrong. Number one says that the contribution moves up to 14%. So is that right, Brandon? From nine and a half?
Yeah, it'll move up from nine and a half to 14% in an effort to keep the employer contribution the same. However, that number is flexible to what the, what the select board chooses. I'm not sure that the employees, not all of the employees agree with the 14%.
Right.
So there is some dissatisfaction considering there's a 4.5% increase in healthcare. However, I believe that the employees are willing to make that sacrifice to remain with the Gold III HD/HP plan rather than go with the Platinum Plan. However, I'll let them correct me if I'm wrong.
So, so can we, at the board here or the employees, can we seem to, let's kind of work out some of these, okay? Because there's one, two, three, right? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven plans to pick from, right? Can we narrow them down somewhat? Yes, Joey?
There's two that I'm looking at that I think is fair for both of them. One of them is that first one, the current health plan at 14%. The other one that I had my eye on, if I were in the employees' position, would be the Platinum Plan, 9.5% without HSA. The difference that I found in them, and I've, I've kind of bounced things off of somebody who's very knowledgeable about healthcare insurance. The difference is during the Gold III HD/HP plan, they have an HSA that'll cover their deductible. So virtually each time they go to the doctors for, and you look down the, the plan list here, what's covered and what isn't, that, that's very good health coverage. Virtually every time they go, it's nothing, out of pocket. The Platinum Plan has no HSA and it would have some things that are out of pocket, but the employee contribution is less. It's still more than the current, but it's a lot more in line with the current. So those two are the ones that I had my eye on and did homework with. The question would be for the employees, do you want to take the hit every pay period and pay more for, for the health insurance? Or with the Platinum Plan, would you want to pay less each pay period and then maybe pay as you use it when you go to the doctor? That, that kind of is my understanding of the difference.
Are there any other comments? I, I think that, you know, looking at this, I do, I would just like to, you know, I don't, I don't mean to hurry things up here, but, but it, it sounds like the only other choice would be whether the board is, is, you know, the cost of healthcare is rising. What was the percent? Just under five? Brandon, wasn't it like four point something or was it five point something?
Yeah, I think it was.
The premium?
Yes.
Yeah, I think just under. So that's, that is, just by doing the math on $270,000, that's what, there must be a difference sheet here somewhere, $10,000 or $12,000 increase in healthcare, even though three people are, are choosing not to take it. And that's a, that's a whole nother subject for me. Are there any other comments about whether or not what is, is that, does the board think or anybody think that those are the two basic ones? Yes?
I would throw out one other option, and that would be to stay at the Gold HDP at nine and a half percent with the HSA. And, and in the same spirit of the opt-out, go 50/50 on the HSA. That would be a reduction in the town's cost of the HSA of $10,500 across the board.
So not fund the HSA to the level that it is?
Just, just split it 50/50. Split the HSA 50. Right now, I believe under that plan, we do 2,000 for a single and 4,000 for a family. The, the deductibles are 3,000 and 6,000. We pay 2,000 and 4,000. Go to 50%, which is a $500 change for a single and a $1,000 change for an individual that, that they would have to make up on the deductible side for that plan to stay the same.
Can you do that within the plan? Is that allowed to change that or do they specify that?
The HSA is something that we do, so, so that's, we give them that. It has nothing to do with the insurance.
Okay. But you, but almost in effect, they asking to move up to 14% does the same thing, don't you think?
Except for that affects them weekly and the HSA would only affect them if they have a situation where they have to use more than what's been contributed to the HSA. So in fact, it, it might not affect them at all. Depends on what's in the HSA, depends on what their needs are, which, which might be the one thing this year and something different next year.
And last year, the, one of the issues was that the HSA, they'd like to see the money upfront so they could tap it sooner. And if you go the other way.
Yeah, yeah, I, I wasn't talking about changing that.
Okay. You can only be funding half of it sooner.
Well.
The way you're describing it.
Well, we put the whole thing in. Where, where we put 2,000 into the single, we did that upfront, $2,000.
Last year.
All upfront.
Or year or?
Yes.
Yeah.
We did that all upfront. I wasn't talking about changing that at all.
Okay.
That money would still go in.
Just the amount.
Just, just the amount.
Oh, the amount.
Just the total amount would reduce.
I understand.
Is there any comment from online? I know everybody's online, but I, but I want to give opportunity to, to jump in if you want to. Wave or yell or something.
John, I'd like to make a, a comment. I just want to clarify, that survey that was sent out, the, the plans that were on that were the 14%. The, it's not what, I mean, if that's what the employee chose because that was one of the options that were given, it's not, and they may have chose that because if you, on that survey, they were given a choice of either the Platinum Plan at nine and a half percent with no HSA, the 14% Gold III HD/HP with a 3,000, 6,000 deductible with an HSA, or you had the same plan with a 6% employee contribution. So those were what we had, those were the, the options that were on that sheet. So some people may have chose the 14% only because that's what was available, or they're thinking that's all that's available. And the other thing that's kind of confusing is, and Mike just brought it up with the HSA, that deductible went up from last year, which was a 14, which was 4,000, but it was a total of a $5,400 deductible. So the employee was, if they used the, the entire plan, they put in the extra 1,400 to match up to the, to the deductible. Well, this year it's jumped from the 5,400 to the 6,000 for the family plan. So I think what, what Mike was suggesting or trying to get across was that $600 increase would be split down the center. Am I correct with that, Mike?
No. No. That, that, that was not what I, what I meant. What I meant was take the 3,000 and the 6,000 and split that 50/50. The town pays 50 and the employee is responsible for 50. So no, it's not what you were saying. And, and that was just an option that I, that, that was just an option that I put out in lieu of the 14%. Because I know the 14% hits you weekly where this other one wouldn't.
Correct. But again, now if, if anybody on a family plan, if they have something where they have to max out everything, on, even if they're paying the, the nine and a half percent on the Gold Plan and you're splitting the deductible at 50/50, that's $3,000 out of the employee's portion that they have to pay beyond the nine and a half percent.
Is there, John, have you?
Since you were, you were, you, you're going to change the, your, your scenario, you changes, it changes the, the HSA from a $4,000 contribution on the town's part down to a $3,000 contribution this year on the town's part.
Yes. This is only for discussion, John, so that's, yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just trying to make sure I'm asking where, where you're going and it, and I'm just, I'm just trying to think that as an employee, because my, even if staying at nine and a half percent, my cost of the, my contribution, the amount I contribute has gone up 4.7% just because the rates went up 4.7%. So if I don't change my contribution percentage, then I'm still paying the 4.7% increase in previous year where last year.
The, the 4.5% increase, I, I, I saw the, the surveys and I, two or three people pointed out that it was 54 or 50 or 52 cents or something like that per hour. Was that correct? I think it was. I think it was. And in doing that math, that's $1,100 a year in, in the increase.
Well, the, the increase, it, well, to put it into real dollars, you're talking on the nine and a half percent, you're talking almost $30 a week, just in the premium.
That's what I said, $1,100, $1,100 a year. That's what I said.
Okay, that's that. So, so what, I'm going to break it down to the weekly aspects, so it's easier for me to work with.
Okay.
So I'm paying $30, I'm paying $30 a week just to meet the premium. And then if I need to meet the deductible, I have to come up with another 3,000 out of pocket. And so you add, so you divide the 3,000 by 52, you really got to come up with quite a bit a week just to cover the deductible and your premium.
Is it, is it not, is it not true, John? And I'm, I'm just looking at this to study the differences between the Platinum Plan and the Gold HSA. And strictly on a healthcare cost, it looks like to the user, when you go down the lineup here about, about the deductible at the, at the Platinum says a maximum out-of-pocket cost of, for a single 1,400, for a family a 2,800, you move over and those Gold Plans, even with the HSA, are considerably higher out of pocket. And I, and I get it that maybe the town be fronting like $4,000, but as I go down the list here to, to needs, which are prescriptions and maximum out-of-pocket, and I'm looking at prescription cost shares, the plan all seems to be lower cost. It seems to be, to me, I'm reading, unless I'm reading something wrong here, it seems to be user-friendly more than the HSA Gold Plan. When you look.
When you take away the HSA.
Yes.
But when you're offering up the HSA, the Gold Plan is almost nothing out of pocket. And, and to John's point, if they're going to be coming up with $3,000 out of pocket, the maximum out of pocket on the Platinum Plan is only 2,800.
I know.
And that includes, I mean, the prescriptions, it says embedded on the plan, which meaning every time you spend money on a prescription, that goes towards your out-of-pocket maximum. So I, I'm confused as to why we don't save money for everyone and go with Platinum Plan and not have HSA.
Well, it's a much lower, it saves a lot of confusion, that's all, I think.
Yeah.
And I, I get it that when you, you know, you, the, the, I guess I understand whether you have a high deductible and then you're, and then you're throwing some money at it to, to, to make that fit. I'm talking about strictly applying the healthcare needs, which are prescriptions, doctor visits and everything. When you go down, look and then, and then you start seeing, well, and then the low deductible. I mean, I'm not sure, I, at a, a maximum or, or an individual of $350 and 700, I haven't seen one of those in like a long time.
No, but what the, the employees are looking at is right here on primary care, specialist visit.
Yep.
Their current plan, zero.
Yeah.
Platinum plan, $15 or $40.
Yep.
Right? Urgent care, $50.
Yep.
Or $100, current, zero.
Yep.
So that, that's where they're at.
Which is after the deductible, which is, which that we are paying. Which is after the deductible, which is which that we are paying for.
Correct.
And when I say we, I mean, everybody that that pays taxes in this town.
Correct.
And that's where I come back to what I said before, which is, we have to be fair to everybody. Times are hard and there's a lot of people out there right now, and I think, Dave, you said the social security increase is one point three percent? Something like that?
That's what I'm getting.
If you if you if you take somebody that's on fixed income getting one point three percent, they get eleven dollars a month. If they're getting a thousand dollars or some and 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 their healthcare costs, Medicare out of out of your social security, it's between three and four hundred dollars a month that that those people are paying for their insurance.
Here's what also, that at least the plan in front of us says, and I'm not picking yet, so I want to be clear about it. We're not asking any employee to to raise the level if if in fact, on this particular sheet, the platinum plan says nine point five percent. So the town is absorbing the four point seven percent increase in healthcare.
Yes.
Not asking for more contribution that way.
Yes, you are.
Well, how?
Because because the because it's a percentage based on the premium and the premiums are higher for the platinum plan. So they will in effect pay more, but it's not much.
Right, but the town is absorbing most of it.
That's all, it's.
But I get it, but the but we're not asking for any more of a contribution percentage wise.
Correct.
I don't even know what that figures out to be weak to for John to compare about what how you differentiate the percentage of that. It only climbed with the, so if it's a hundred dollars, it was only nine point five. It is nine point five. The town is paying.
The rest.
Ninety point five. I don't know, I'm just looking down here to try to compare and put myself in the position about, am I the user here? What would be better for me? I don't know the answer, but I'm starting to look and I'm saying, okay, wait a minute. It seems to me much simpler to say the deductible is lower, that the the costs are are paid for more and I don't have to worry about shuffling the deck all the time. I know.
And then if you're not going to the doctors all the time, for someone like me, I don't hardly ever go to the doctors, luckily. So for all these things where it's fifty dollar copay, chiropractor rate, you know, chiropractic benefit, they're paying twenty dollars under the platinum plan instead of zero with what they currently have. For me, I would want to not raise my weekly contribution, who is me. And if I could have better healthcare coverage by doing so.
So which one does that pick?
Or at least for me.
Which one does that pick?
For me, that would pick the platinum plan, because if we're going to cut HSA back, I'm still going to spend the money out of my pocket, you know, so I might as well cap it out and have have better insurance.
Does anybody want to want to weigh in that hasn't yet? Because I'll be glad to listen if you, online or at the table, one or the other. I mean, you gotta yell or something or wave at me or go ahead and speak up. Can can everybody hear me again still? We haven't lost anybody, right? Audios? John, can you hear me? Can you wave? Nice, thanks.
I think Ray just turned his microphone on.
Okay. Ray, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I mean, just going by the surveys, all the guys in my group are happiest with the gold plan, gold three plan. A lot of them have a lot of doctor's appointments and a lot of medications. And they're all having the deductible, it's all out of pocket and copays throughout the year constantly with the platinum plan. That's the feedback I got.
That's what that would do then, so that was my next question.
Yes, that's what it would do. The gold plan with giving them the HSA makes it so each time they go to the doctors for, say, urgent care, chiropractor, anything, it's zeros across the board. The platinum plan isn't. They're going to be paying as they go.
But how does it affect in totality?
In totality?
So the so the the HSA is not, the the total out of pocket cost under any one of these plans is not zero. It's not zero, so.
The 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 big the big problem is you've got to look out of pocket from a a a long term standpoint. Not necessarily each time you have a visit. And and I'm just, I've been quiet on some of this, but I I'm I'm going to say, I work at one of the biggest companies up in Lebanon area and I wish I had one of these to pick from. I mean, my emergency room visit's just a hundred and fifty bucks to go. I I I mean, I'm I'm paying more than what the platinum plan is paying out of pocket for meds and stuff and my insurance just went up too. I mean, everybody's, the the premiums are going up. So I I it's hard, I I understand everybody's idea on the looking like paycheck, what they're getting in their paycheck versus when I go, I've got to come up with twenty bucks, fifty bucks, a hundred bucks. And it, you got to look long term too. You got to look, okay, maybe what is it that you're doing? Okay, so if I got to pay twenty bucks every week out of my pocket for meds, how does that equate to, there's a limit of how much you're going to pay here?
Yeah.
Versus the other one where, yeah, but I've got to put money into this and then I've also got a deductible that's that's high. I mean, even the individual family, the plan deductible, individual family, three hundred and fifty and seven hundred dollars versus three thousand, six thousand.
But the deductible on the gold plan is also the max out of pocket.
Yeah, yeah, fourteen hundred and twenty eight, but I but I see exactly what they're saying. It's 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 per visit thing. I mean, for specialty drugs or for for, yeah, you go see, I got to pay twenty bucks, twenty, thirty, forty dollars for a specialist, twenty bucks for the normal person. I mean, every time I go, so yeah, I mean, but.
With with the current plan, the way it is, the employees basically have a one thousand dollar deductible. That's what it comes down to, because the town puts two thousand, four thousand, they so they're responsible. If they're going to max out, they're going to pay.
They are up there.
Huh?
Were responsible this year for fourteen hundred, not a thousand. It's a fifty four hundred deductible on the current plan.
No, it's not. It's, well, but 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 the plan, this plan here is three thousand, six thousand, and we do two thousand, four thousand. So that leaves you with.
Last year, it was it was fifty four hundred deductible, so we paid fourteen hundred dollars out of pocket for the deductible ourselves.
But we're looking at the twenty one, we're we're looking at twenty twenty one, so I don't know what happened to the deductible.
So we were, so we did not give you four thousand dollars for your deductible last year?
You did, but there was fifty four hundred dollars deductible. You paid four thousand.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, you're right. For a family, it's two thousand. For for a single, it's one.
But can I ask one quick question? Ray, you just you just said that you paid fourteen thousand, last year you paid fourteen thousand out of pocket.
Fourteen hundred.
Uh, fourteen, I'm sorry, fourteen hundred.
Fourteen hundred towards the deductible.
Towards the deductible and then and then that's all you had to pay, right?
Correct. Well, no, the premiums each week.
Well, no, 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 I I understand that, but because the individual for platinum is fourteen and the family is twenty eight. So was that your fourteen hundred, was that a family?
Correct.
Yeah.
And this year it's going to jump up to two thousand. And also, if you guys looked at all the surveys, I don't think anybody was not cooperative. I mean, we all realize that we have to pay our share and go up in rates. And I I just wanted to stress that. I mean, the guys, yeah, it's a shock to go up four and a half percent a year, but we all get it. I mean, we understand and we're willing to work with you guys. We're not, we're not trying to be.
How how does it, so maybe somebody here at the table can tell me, how does it rise from an out of pocket of fourteen hundred, which is what Ray just said, to two thousand, six hundred dollars more?
Because the deductible went from fifty four hundred to six thousand for a family.
And we're still putting, and as the old plan, we put four thousand into it.
Okay. Did you have a question, John?
Just, I'm trying to remember on the HSA, is that a use it or lose it?
No.
That results.
No, once that money goes in, it stays.
So there is an advantage to going along with Joey said earlier, if you're healthy and young, the HSA, you could accumulate quite a bit of money. If we drop it, they that doesn't roll over.
And 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 another caveat to that, John, is there is absolutely no law that restricts the use of those funds.
Right.
Yeah.
It it that money could be there, and and I'm not saying this has ever happened or would happen, but the but it exists. The possibility exists that somebody could save twenty, thirty, forty thousand dollars in there and and it's like another retirement account.
Yeah, it is, it's savings.
You could take it out.
For non-medical purposes, you have to get fined and have to pay a high tax fee.
Fifteen percent plus the taxes.
Yeah.
Same as an, same as a retirement account. It's like a second.
So there is an advantage if you stay healthy to keeping your HSA.
Yes. And 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 the way I've looked at this is considering that, for me, I have no problem spending money on healthcare. But with the potential that it exists for it to be used elsewhere, that I have a problem with. I'm not saying.
Just philosophically.
That's correct. That's correct. I'm not accusing anybody. I don't know of any situations that are like that, but it does, the potential exists.
Question, question, the money for HS, to go into an HSA, that's pre-taxed? So if if an employee wants to put in, let's say, a hundred bucks a week or or whatever, fifty bucks a week, that's pre-tax, correct?
Yeah.
For now.
Huh?
It's pre-tax for now unless you you roll it out.
Right, but if you use it, if you use it for medical stuff, it's then it's it's not.
That's right.
The same way mine, the same way mine is I got a card and boom, I can use it for that stuff. Buy Band-Aids, I can pay my copays with it. But it's pre-tax also, so the money we put in, that's all just, that's just normal. There's no tax on that either, so. So anybody that would put in, if they went with Mike's thing, they would be a pre, they would they wouldn't be paying taxes on that money either. So they would be saving a little bit more on that too.
When when you draw out the HSA, do you have your retirement age before you can do that and use it for anything?
Once you reach retirement age, you still have to pay the taxes, just like a retirement account.
Right.
But you don't, but the penalty goes away.
But before retirement age, can you still draw it out and buy a car?
Yes.
Yep.
You just, you have to pay the the fifteen percent penalty plus the taxes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Which isn't really a lot on the penalty when you think about it.
Uh, forty thousand dollars, yeah, it is.
Well, no, yeah, if you've got that, well, no, but what if you.
The car cost.
But if you've got that, no, I'm not even, I'm not even using that for example. You could pull it out if you had ten in there.
Yes.
Just pay the penalty.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And the taxes.
It's a couple thousand dollars, so you still win eight.
And the taxes.
You could pull it out to pay your property taxes.
And you could do anything.
Yes, you can.
So I'm not, you don't have to get let it get to a certain amount before you do that, make that move.
Do anything.
But the same is true with stocks or other things, yeah. Is the board comfortable making the decision tonight?
We have to.
Yeah.
I don't know, every time I listen, there's another deadline, so.
I thought it was tonight was drawn.
Joey, go ahead.
I think it's fair to say that the cost of the town is two hundred and forty seven, nine seventy five on what they agreed on in the survey. And then the platinum plan is two forty seven, seven forty two. So I mean, if they really.
Well, yeah, but the cert.
They agreed to the fourteen percent contribution, which would, it would make the town's contribution the same, no matter what plan we're talking about. So if they've agreed on one, I I think we ought to go with what they've agreed on.
I agree.
So the, yes, so the town's share is X.
The same either way, no matter which plan we're talking about.
Yes, yeah, that's fair enough, I think, too. I I don't know. The out of pocket cost of the town and the contribution for the employees to move up to fourteen and a half percent or fourteen percent, right?
If that's what they want, then that's fine. I personally wouldn't do that if I was an employee, but if that's what they've agreed upon, then.
Is there any way to, you, maybe you can answer this, maybe you can't, Brandon, or Suzanne's on, is there any way to ask, they could pick if they so choose to be on the platinum plan or the HSA or no? It's only one or the other. It's just one size fits all and done.
This is what we offered last year. They could choose different percentages and different plans. We offered the platinum plan with a seven and a half percent premium and the gold plan with a nine and a half percent premium.
But but my question is a little different. So suppose the, suppose we do what Joey just said, which is to offer the gold HD HP fourteen percent plan or the platinum plan with a nine and a half percent without the HSA, that's the question. Are they both are they both viable to pick from or no? You just, can you, you have a one or the other?
And that would be the decision. You can offer many plans as you want to.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Yeah, I got three to pick from in my work.
Well, then we could leave that up.
Basically, what we're agreeing to is the amount of of our contribution.
Yeah, and it's the same for either one.
And then people can pick and choose whatever they want, but they got to do it.
Within that.
What's the drop dead date for that?
December fourteenth or fifteenth.
Yeah, something like that.
Two weeks.
I I'm okay with either letting them pick. I I I like the fact of of, I mean, they've got to figure what they want.
Yes, and and have at it.
Right.
Maybe maybe somebody will look at the H, uh, non, the platinum plan and say, okay, that's for me. I'm okay with that.
Is, can I ask a question?
Yep, go ahead.
Is, um, so right now, it looks like two plans to choose from possibly. Yeah, are we going to throw in a third plan that Mike was talking about as well or is that strapped?
Which was?
Cutting the HSA in half.
Three thousand dollar HSA, nine and a half percent premium.
Who would choose that? Why would they choose that? Why, oh, oh, becau- okay, because that would, well, it splits the, yeah.
It would be a harder situation where they're not working.
To to be honest, to to be honest, when they said that, I was going to say, well, why don't you just offer the entire sheet? Let them pick what they want. We've already, we've already agreed to pay them for the most expensive plan. If somebody wants to take a bronze plan and pay almost nothing, let them have.
Actually did, I think we did that one year. There was a single that actually did that one year. But they didn't have to have much, I think it worked.
Young, why not?
I know. I think they did that for a lower contribution, they still get healthcare. I know. What's the board want to do? We want to, I don't even know what time it is.
Wait a minute, before the, before the board makes the decision, I just want to make it clear that again, the survey that went out, you were given the choice of the gold plan at fourteen percent. It doesn't necessarily mean that that's where the employee wants to be, is at fourteen percent. And if we could be at nine and a half percent on the gold plan, that's fine. But the other part of it is, what's the HSA going to be on either one, whether you're at the nine and a half, if you're on the gold plan, the deductible, the total deductible is six thousand for two person or family plan. So are you are you talking of only funding the HSA at three thousand?
I think I think that's going to be.
Plan, or are you going to keep it at the four thousand or split the difference of the increase so that the town increases their portion of to forty three hundred and if and the employee pushes his contribution to seventeen hundred to make up the six thousand.
With a motion on on the, on on just the HSA thing, that way we could just get a quick consensus on it. So so I'll I'll make a motion to recommend we fund the HSAs at fifty fifty.
So you're you're saying you're going to fund it, so it's going to be three thousand from the town, three thousand from the employee on the HSA.
I'm going to vote no on this. I just want you to say, so you understand, I'm going to personally vote no on it. I'm just trying to resolve the issue really quickly.
I think it'd be better to, well, I'm not, you can make a motion all you want to, there'll be a second, but I think maybe we should establish, what I think John is looking for is to see what, if if we're offering a plan with an HSA, they would like to know the level of the contribution from the town.
Yes, correct.
Yes.
We would have to remain the same as we were this year, the same it is on the data, the two thousand, four thousand. If we defunded it a little bit to say three thousand and capped out at, then that would make no sense because the the platinum plan has a maximum out of pocket of twenty eight hundred. So either way, you're paying less money for the platinum plan.
I I only attach that fifty fifty to the gold plan with a nine and a half percent. If you go to the fourteen percent, stays the same.
So can we come to an agreement on the board that we're going to fund if 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 a if a HSA plan is to be made available that the the maximum family contribution will be four thousand dollars? That's what it is right now. And 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 a a single person plan will be two thousand?
Correct.
Okay, and what is the, what is the two person plan? Is it two or is it, does it split the difference at three or what does that work, Brandon, for this year?
It only changes for the single person, the the deductible is still the same for the spouse and the employee, the employee and a spouse or employee and a child or a family plan, they're all capped at four thousand.
Okay.
I'm sorry, they're capped at six thousand.
Okay, so they're all, yeah, so they're all the same, so.
Yes.
Correct.
Okay, good. So does the board, do we need to make a motion to do that or we, we need an agreement that we're going to fund the HSA from the town's behalf at the same level as we are this year?
Yes, we're in agreement, and we're going to front load it, right?
Yes, yeah, yeah. That comes on January first.
So that resolves that part.
Okay.
Aye.
Are we taking, Brandon, we're taking minutes on this, right? Because this is kind of an important.
Yeah, I'm I'm basically going to go back to the recording and just type up all the minutes.
Okay.
So it's it's being recorded.
Okay. Go ahead, John.
Following up on that a little bit, that question I guess would be for Suzanne. What's that do to our math and and keeping track if somebody picks up the platinum?
Well, there's no HSA, they don't get that.
No HSA with that.
So that person would not get the four, two thousand or four thousand.
That's correct, but they get the benefit, they get the benefit of a very low deductible plan.
And a lower weekly contribution.
I just want to make it clear that if they pick the platinum, they're not going to get the HSA money.
Well, they can't. By law, you can't.
Right, right. No, but 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 they're going to get what Joey just said, which is a lower weekly premium and and a lot less the deductible. Go ahead, Suzanne.
You can just get an HSA with a high deductible plan. It needs to be one of the high deductible health plans.
Okay, what you said.
Yeah, yes.
Yeah, otherwise you cannot offer, it's not a combination. You cannot pay an HSA with a platinum plan.
Right.
But the people that pick. But the people that pick the high deductible plan can have an HSA and the other one, yes, the other ones can.
So we've solved, we've solved a little bit anyway, we've gotten to the deductible, I mean, yes, to the town's contribution of the HSA. What does the board want to do with the plans?
Make a motion to.
We need to make a motion then to get it off.
Make a motion to offer the two plans, uh, the plat, the, um.
No, we're offering the amount, I think, aren't we?
No, it, it's in, it's in the plans.
In the plans.
Uh, make a motion to, eh, eh, to offer the gold three HDHP at fourteen percent with an HSA, uh, or by choice, the platinum plan at nine and a half percent without an HSA.
Can you, so those are the only two choices the employee can make?
Right now.
Is that a, is there a second to the motion?
There's a second to that.
Okay, motion been made and seconded, now we're gonna get into it, John, motion been made and seconded to offer for two, twenty-twenty-one, the MVP gold three HDHP with a fourteen percent employee contribution on the premium with a health savings account. And the twenty-twenty-one MVP platinum plan with a nine and a half percent employee contribution without the health savings account. Is there any discussion?
I have one.
Okay.
If I can make a comment.
Yep.
Okay, though, that, you've settled on two plans, but now again, the employee, at, at the fourteen percent, if you go, if the employee chooses the gold plan, and I'm gonna take a family plan because that's what I would be eligible for, my, my weekly contribution to the, at the fourteen percent would be fourteen, oh, thirty-four dollars and twelve cents. That's my cost just for the premium. On the, on the fourteen percent gold plan, and then I have to add in, to make up the difference in the deductible, I have to add in another thirty-eight dollars and forty-six cents a week to ma, to make up that two thousand dollar deductible. At any time period of the year, I gotta make up, that, but that's what I'd have to put in every week, so that makes my total cost on the gold plan for a two-person of eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents a week. And if I take that, let me get those numbers together, eighty-two point.
Forty-four hundred.
Eight times.
I do it without, I do it without a computer.
Yeah, they, that's three hundred and fifty dollars, and now, Mike, you are saying.
I'm sorry.
People on a fixed income, they're paying three to four hundred dollars a month, I'm paying three-thirty a month anyways. On that, I would, I would be paying three hundred and thirty dollars a month on the fourteen percent.
Yes. And, and part of that is, part of that is the increase that, that MVP has exerted on us, too.
Exactly, but, uh, but then my, my rate of contribution goes up four and a half percent.
Yep. Yes.
For what, for, from, from the, from my, my premium cost, right, my premium contribution right now.
Yeah, so let me ask you a question, John.
It goes up even, even if you keep it at the nine and a half percent, the cost of the premium, I'm still paying four point seven percent increase over what I'm paying now, even if you kept it at the nine and a half percent.
So.
Because the premium, the total premium went up four point seven percent.
Can you do that same thing for me, John, for the, uh, for the platinum plan? Does, does that make it any better, or does it make it worse for you?
Well, the platinum plan is, well, yeah, it's gonna be a lot cheaper, it's gonna be eleven dollars cheaper a week on the platinum plan. But the wild card now becomes, as you said, I would have to take twenty-eight, okay, let me do that one, twenty-eight hundred, and you divide that by fifty-two, and that's gonna come out to fifty-three.
What, what's the twenty-eight hundred?
It's a maximum.
That's the maximum out-of-pocket. So it's the maximum amount of pocket that we're, that we've gotta come up to on the gold plan, which is two thousand.
Platinum.
And it's, and it's thirty-three dollars a week on top of that. I see where he's going.
So it turns out to be a hundred dollars a week instead of eighty-two?
No.
So the, the platinum plan.
Yep.
Just to answer your question.
Yep.
The platinum plan per week, total cost to the employee.
Yep.
On a two-person is eighty-seven dollars on the platinum plan.
Yep.
The total cost on the gold at fourteen percent is eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents.
Yep. Yep.
So you're only talking, what, less than five bucks? A week?
If you spend the twenty-eight hundred.
I was gonna say, if you hit your maximum out-of-pocket, that, that's a big if, in many cases.
Yeah, and it's maybe if you don't, but, and it's good for you, good for everybody, because you have a healthy employee and they're at work every day. That's, that's good for everybody.
Correct.
Yes.
And, and we've had a, we still have, we have a deductible right now that you've had to meet, John.
Fourteen hundred.
You're right, I had to meet thirteen hundred.
Right.
Over the, the four thousand that you put in?
Yes. There's a motion that.
And again, my cost, so my cost this year, because the premium went up, it went up four point seven percent, I'm already paying that increase, if I stayed at nine and a half percent, I'm already paying four and a half percent increase. But the, the deductible went up also, we've never had that where both the deductible and the premium went up at the same time.
That's why, I mean, I, that's why I, I would take a real hard look at that platinum one, where you don't, where the deductible is so much lower, but that's just me, to look at, I, I don't know, I don't have all the answers at all. There's a motion that.
Yeah, I don't either.
There's a motion that's been made and it's on the floor, is there any discussion about offering the two plans and then letting the employees pick? Or do you wanna amend the motion, or what does the board wanna do?
I would stand behind the motion, and I would remind the employees that this is, I might go out on a limb and say, this is still better health insurance than ninety percent of employers are gonna offer anywhere in the valley.
Private, anyway. Municipal.
Ninety percent of employers in the valley.
No, I think this.
No, I'm just making a point that, that traditionally, government has done a little better on insurance, through the private sector, by leaps and bounds.
Well, I don't, and I don't know, no, I, well, I know, I don't know exactly, Blue Cross, Blue Cross got eliminated pretty fast on this because of their premiums.
Yep.
But I can tell you that the school is higher than this, and I'm not sure that it covers what they're doing.
Didn't the school twenty-five percent?
Twenty.
Twenty?
Yeah, the premium, but, 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 but there are, and every year, they do, they, and I'm sure that this one is no different, either, any one of these plans on here. They, they get a little sneaky, they, they, they ask for copays and, and medicine payments, and wait a minute, I cover for this and not that, and you never know that until you show up. So it's not in your plan, so, I mean, that's where the narrative and all these things have changed year over year. They say, well, the plan changed, and that's why the doctors moved within plans, and I don't know, we've had our share of up and down with healthcare. The motion has been made and seconded for twenty-twenty-one to offer, the gold three HDHP fourteen percent plan, uh, employee contribution with the HSA. And as a choice, also, the twenty-twenty-one MVP platinum plus plan at nine and a half percent premium pay, that's the same as what we do now, without the HSA. Is there any, is there any other changes that the board would like to make, or are you ready for the vote? Vote. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Dave?
Yes.
I just wanna thank you guys for, uh, the hard work on this, I know it's frustrating for everybody, it's frustrating for the employees, too. And, uh, and again, next year, if we could try to do this a little bit sooner, that'd be awesome, for everybody that has to choose from their spouse's insurance as well.
Hold on, I, I, I wanna make one comment before people log off, I mean, we haven't taken anything to do with the, uh, with the budget up. Um, so, John, I'm looking at you, and I'm just saying, we're not done yet, this is healthcare, so we'll, we may figure out something else a little bit later when we get.
I, I've got another question on healthcare when you, when everything is all said and done here.
Okay.
And.
I didn't.
Just one more thing real quick, any, anytime you guys can offer more than one plan and have it be like the same price as you guys, it fits our guys better, 'cause they can choose for their scenario best.
Right.
Well, thank you.
The, the only, the only thing that I know we did this year was we had MVP, and that's it, so that's really the only choice, it's the plans that are offered within that particular company. Go ahead, John, I. Go ahead, John, I'll take your comment.
All right, I, I have just one other question, and it's on the opt-out, because, because we started so late, and we're in so late in this year, this year, I took my wife's insurance through the school with the thinking that there was going to be opt-outs. Now, the, the survey that was sent around, that we all had to choose the plans from, it says there are no opt-outs, and the only granted opt-outs will be grandfathered in, is that the case this year?
I, I don't have the answer to that question.
That was never discussed at this level.
Hasn't, hasn't been talked about yet. I don't know the deadlines, I don't know the deadlines for, for any, if there are any.
Two weeks.
What do you mean?
Well, they, they either gotta get in or get out in two weeks.
Hold on.
That's what my question was gonna be to John.
Hold on, John, go ahead, did you have anything else, or no?
Well, no, I'm just saying that it, it said right on that survey that there would be no opt-outs. So now that I've already chosen to opt-out, because I had to make a decision before any of this information became available to me because of the timeframe, and now thinking that we were eligible for an opt-out, and then it, now it's stating on this sheet that there would, will be no opt-outs for this calendar, or for this insurance year.
So, hold on.
And I'm just asking, is that, is that in fact going to be the way that it is, that there will be no opt-out?
Hold on, Paul, go ahead. So I guess my question, um, you, the question you have is, do you have to still take insurance now? I don't think, I don't think anybody can make you take insurance, like, you've already opted out, right, you're not, you're.
All I, all I've taken is the school's insurance.
Right, so.
So I'm out of it, but I'm asking, the opt-out payment is where, is what I'm asking of. It says on this sheet that there's not going to be a payment. But those that are currently in the opt-out will be grandfathered in, so those that did it last year are only the ones available to take it this year.
I see his point, I, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that, John, 'cause I don't see the sheet that you've got, did you have another question?
I do have, I, no, I have a question first, John. And it, the question is to you, John. When, what is that date at the school that you had to make that decision by?
The fifteenth of November.
Is that the same every year?
No, but that's the opening enrollment, and, and it could vary, but it's usually within the first half of November.
Okay, Br, Brandon, could you document that so that we deal with that appropriately next year?
Absolutely.
Same thing.
That's what, I wanted to make sure we get to the point that we're gonna deal with that next year, that this won't happen again.
I got a question that pertains.
In fact, it was, you know, based on these four options, what, what do the employees want?
Is the, is the, and, and, and John, I'm gonna tell you, you know, the opt-out thing has ruffled my feathers a lot in the past, and I was not on the board when it got changed again, I don't support the opt-out. I've talked to a number of people lately that have got COVID-nineteen or, or affected by that, and frankly, they don't have healthcare, and it bothers me a lot. Brandon, let me ask you a question, when you did these budget numbers and the numbers you highlighted in orange, was, did that take into consideration the total number of when you, the cost of the town of the, of the opt-outs, or whatever that?
Yes, it did, it includes the three existing opt-outs, um, and then the HSAs, so that is two forty-seven, nine seven four for the employer.
But I don't wanna pin anybody down on this, so does that increase, or, and does the, does this number get moved any with the decision that someone may make? So do we actually, do we actually?
So if we decided to offer the opt-out, um, we would, well, now that we know Mr. Esti has taken the school's insurance, the family plan, the hundred and fifteen thousand will go, will decrease, um, and since there's no opt-out, that number will remain decreased unless the board chooses to continue with the opt-outs, at which point.
But, but, but does, but, but where does that fit in the, when was this dated? Was it dated in, in the coordination with, with all the decisions that have been made by all the employees, or was there some assumptions?
Nope, these were, these were assumptions.
Okay. So the numbers are gonna change again?
Yes.
Okay.
But they're not gonna increase, they could only get lower.
That's, that's exactly right.
I think to add about the opt-outs, if I may, um, it does, it, if you have two employees that wanna take the opt-out because they can afford the other person's insurance now, it actually saves the town sixteen thousand dollars roughly per person on family.
Right.
Yeah.
So if John, if John, if you take away the opt-out, John will no longer afford it, and he comes back to the town, instead of saving fifteen thousand, you're not adding twenty-six.
My response, my response to that is very, very short, very short. This is about healthcare, it shouldn't be about money, and, and there are lots of other companies that don't offer this at all, and it bothers me terribly to listen to people that don't have healthcare. And I, I, I don't think it saves, I think that's the wrong use of the word, saves money, because it just puts the burden on another entity, and then rewards somebody for, for taking something that I don't think ought to be put in that context. The board has made its decision on, on healthcare, and, and now that people can choose, um, so I guess I don't, I don't know what time it is.
I, I, well, actually, I still think there's, I, I still think there's a question open.
Don't answer my question.
That's exactly right.
Well, I, I don't know that we're gonna answer that tonight.
Um.
Well. But then, again, now, if you're, if you're going to close out the opt-out option, I wanna know if I'm available, if I'm eligible for the opt-out payment, like anybody else is, like the three that are already on.
The, the, is that?
This has nothing, this has nothing to do with whether it's free money or however you wanna put it. I'm just asking, now that I have taken the path, the, the school's insurance, am I eligible for an opt-out? Payment?
The, the answer.
The sheet, the survey sheet that was sent out makes it appear that I am not available, uh, uh, eligible for the opt-out payment, but the three that are already in the program are.
Here's how I'm gonna respond. The insurance policy is what it is in the town as a matter of policy, it hasn't been changed by this board as yet, and therefore, it's a management decision that has to follow the policy of the board unless the board changes it. So the policy is intact, John, right to this day, to offer the opt-out policy as it stands. The only way that gets changed is if the board makes a, a motion and passes that, to change that policy.
I agree.
So.
Correct.
It is, it is now, we can disagree about it all, all we want to, but right now, it is the policy of the town. It would have to be warned for a change, I feel, um, and the battery is running low.
Quick, somebody run.
So, so as Brandon had said earlier about the, uh, I don't know which battery is running low, I hope I'm still on, um.
It's you.
What's that?
Maybe it's you.
Maybe it's me. The policy is what it is right now, John, so I think that you could have a strong case that the policy is what it is, and that you or anybody else can claim whatever they wanna do.
Well, thank you.
Okay? Um.
Thank you for your time on this.
And I just wanna say, John, I, I, thanks for explaining that, I was thinking something different, I was, I, I now understand about getting paid to not take the insurance, so I apologize, I was thinking that just meant you had to be on the insurance policy or not, so I, I have, I, I don't usually get an opt-out option in my company, so I don't ever think about getting money for not having the insurance there, so.
Right.
Thank you.
Is there?
There's a lot of companies that don't offer the opt-out payment for opting out.
We're, we're done with healthcare, because we need to move on to fire, the motion's been made and passed. What's, the motion's been made and passed, so let's go to the town manager report, please, I don't know if there's any more for you to add, Brandon, or?
Thank, thank you to everybody that worked with us on this.
I just have a couple of things, Dave.
Okay.
Um. So another update on the website, um. Right now, we're in the, we're third in line in the developer queue. So CMS, Civic CMS, they, they handle website development on a first in, first out basis. So they anticipate that we'll be going into that development stage mid-week this week. And then we have about four to five weeks after that. So it looks like we'll be ready to go live somewhere in mid-January. But then the website will be complete. All the pages will be complete. So it's a lot different than the last website. And I just wanna announce to the Weathersfield residents that we, the town of Weathersfield did receive funding under the LGER grant, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. To distribute up to one thousand dollar grants to small businesses in Weathersfield that were impacted by COVID-19. Those applications must be submitted by December eighteenth. And they'll be reviewed and voted on in the next select board meeting on December twenty-eighth. Excuse me, twenty-first.
So the cutoff date is the eighteenth for applications?
Yes, the eighteen for applications.
None, none after that will be accepted, so I wanna caution people. And you can visit that on the website, the applications.
Yes.
And there, initially it started off as ten one thousand dollar grants, but I see that that's been split down. So there'll be, there'll be some type of judgment made on two hundred and fifty, five hundred, seven hundred and fifty, or a thousand. Depending on how many applications that are submitted, I suspect. What, do, do you have any so far? Do you know?
Yes, I've received two or three.
Yep, okay.
Basically, what we're gonna do on the eighteenth is, we've created a ten internal team to review the applications. And then we're gonna make recommendations to the select board.
Does the money disappear if you don't reach the, the top threshold?
The ten thousand dollars?
Yeah.
Um, we can reallocate it to something else.
Yeah, but, but my understanding is that that would have to be done like by the thirty-first, some kind of allocation.
Yes.
So, so on the, we'll know more on the eighteenth when the cutoff date is for those applications.
Yes.
And then the, the, the date of decision, which will be the twenty-first, right? So we'll know the answer to the question by the twenty-first, which is means the meeting where that money gets back to into the revolving of the, of the dispersments for COVID-19. Okay?
I mean, I just have one comment. For the fire department contracts, we have a brief presentation between the three of us to give to the board and the fire departments.
Okay. Good. So how do you wanna start that off? Because we're ready.
Okay. So when I talked to the Scottney Fire Association. One of the issues that they brought to our attention was we don't want to turn over the finances to the town because we have late, late bills. And we don't trust that bills will get paid on time. So what we've done is, we took that information in, we discussed it today, and we created an invoice processing sheet that Rosalie will discuss with the board. And then we're gonna talk a little bit about the fire department liaison position that we created. And Olivia's gonna talk to you a little, a little bit about that.
Okay.
Over to Rosalie.
Okay, should I move a microphone closer?
Yep.
Thank you. Um, so we do have a, I mean, you have it with you. It's pretty cut and dry. It's straightforward. It's a process. An order of operations that invoices will go through to be make sure that they're kept track of and everything is paid on time. Um, the invoice is received in the office and sent to me, the financial officer. I stamp it and I code the invoice with the specific department, and then I enter it into the NEMERIC Accounts Payable. I review it and I send it to the appropriate department head. The department head reviews that and signs off. The town manager then reviews that and signs off as well. The check is printed. If the department head approves it, then the warrant is created, approved by the select board. And then treasurer signs the check after the approval and then the check is mailed. So it's pretty, that's what I've been doing my entire week here, so it's, it's a pretty clear-cut system. I'm very familiar with it, is what I'm saying.
So is there any questions from the board or the fire departments about how bills are paid now? Can vary how bills were paid in the past, or?
And that's where I was going. So what, what do you think, or, or what does one think happened before? Before this, so what changes were made in this that were different from what was happening in the past?
Well, one, the processing of invoices is spelled out right here in the process. So before it was kinda like this sheet didn't exist. It was kind of like mental notes. So I think maybe sometimes steps were thick. I wasn't here, so I don't know.
Okay, but that's fair enough. So, so I'm, I'm just saying, when a bill comes in, you know, or any, any piece of information comes in, you get stamped. So there's a stamp at the, at the desk, anything. So that's a receive thing. Then it goes to whatever it would be, a bill, or to Flo Ann's desk, or to some other inquiry. I don't know. So that, there was some problem there with the fire departments about some things that weren't getting paid or some, something was absent, right? So, so, communication. So, so this seems to solve that. Is that true?
Yes, and we even added an additional layer. And that's where Olivia comes in and she'll talk to you a little bit about that.
Okay, so, so I can see already that this isn't such a bad deal because I'm thinking ahead, okay, what is, what would be a check and balance of this? So it comes in to, so a bill comes in and then it goes over to the finance desk. It gets filed and then, then it goes to the department head for, to check, to see whether or not-
They have to sign off on it.
Yep, and then it goes to the manager probably, right, to sign off. Is there a dollar threshold here? And maybe that was part of the problem in the past. So if it's, you mean if it's a bill for twenty-eight dollars that's gotta go to the town manager's desk for approval?
That's, you know, it's funny that you say that because we were just down here discussing that. We're, when do I need to sign off?
Yes.
What requires my sign off? And will the board go off the list?
I don't know the answer to that, but that's the first thing that I-
Electric bills. He doesn't need to look at those.
Telephone bills. And then, and then we're going, keep following the thing where it goes up to the, you know, for, for, although it, it comes to us anyway on a whole list of vendors. Payroll checks, just so everybody remembers, payroll, anything to do with that, basically gets paid before we even see it. We sign off on them, but they don't. They go direct deposit and they're gone. The only way that we have to comment on those is after the fact, if we have a question. Vendors, on the other hand, those are the ones that are held for our board meetings. That, that's been sometimes, probably, some of the sticking point. So if we don't have a meeting for three weeks, and I don't know when the bills get sent in. That could prevent, that could be a bit of a problem for some bills, right? You'd pass the, you'd go past the day of before it got even approved. So, well, those are questions, because I saw all the hands and they're all looking at me and go.
The first question is exactly what you just ended with, invoicing. Where are they, where are the invoices coming from? Are, are we leaving it up to the fire departments to walk these invoices over here? If they-
Yes, that's where she comes in.
Is that good policy, though? Or would it be better for us to instruct them to have the bills directed to the town? And can we do that, or? That way, it, it comes right from the vendor to, to the office.
Yeah, absolutely.
It would, it would speed it up by three or four days or more, depending on how frequently the, either departments met, or it could be a week, could be more. Paul, did you have a question?
Uh, yeah, I was just, this is, this is great. This is how it works. I'd like to see something too about when it doesn't work, what's the process? And how do we get to the root cause of what that was? So let's say the credit card bill's not paid for the fuel for Scottney. They go to the pumps, it doesn't work. And they call us up and say, hey, this doesn't work. I, I'd like to see, then what do we do? What are our actions? And I'd like to be able to figure out where we fell short on that, just, just like Dave was saying, which I think is some of what you've got Olivia in here doing, because if we don't get a bill until two days before it's due, then that's, that, there's nothing we can do. At that point, I don't think. But, but we need to, we need to track that, because right now we have no data to say why anything happened. So we can all speculate, but we need, going forward, we've got a good process here. I think we need just one, quick one on how to figure out.
So the board authorized this year for us to make the credit card payment in that case. So it requires Rosalie's signature, my signature, and Steve's signature, and then he runs it to the bank in case of credit card.
It, it, I just was, that is just an, an example. I just meant in general, because, I mean, God. I forget sometimes at home. I mean, you, you, something happens, a card number changes, I don't know. But that way we can track and figure out, and I think you've got some stuff here with-
It can't, those things, it sounded like to me an awful lot of pain in the neck right there, because these caps are not a lot of money. And you mean to tell me you can't push a button and do that upstairs at the desk to pay?
Well, it needs three signatures.
Only at a certain dollar level, isn't it? Really? Did you have a question, John?
I'm following up more or less from what you're saying. I know we got a ten-step process here, and you throw that gap in for our meeting. And credit cards, not only they only got thirty days to pay, it has to be in their hands in thirty days.
And that's why I thought about electronic transfer and, and just kinda like say, you know-
You need to speed, you need to speed that up significantly, but not taking us completely out of the loop.
Perhaps the separation is between the fact that these are separate departments. They're the ones that are using their credit card to do their thing, and, and we're covering that bill. You, you might not need that set of checks and balances on that system. Where you do for the, the credit cards that are the office cards, then you wanna keep an eye on those.
You do, but, I'm sorry.
You're, you're fine. Go ahead.
It wasn't too long ago that we were getting late charges on the town's credit card because of this process. And I believe that we authorized, I'm not sure exactly how we did it, but they, they could prepay.
Yes.
As long as it was properly reviewed.
Mike made a very good point a minute ago, which was, why don't we just get these in the town's name? And the bills come right here directly. Not, if it's, if it's for diesel fuel and whatnot, we know where it's gonna be generated from. It's either gonna be the Jiffy Mart or Sunoco, one or the other. Why don't we just have it directly come on a computer as the bill? I mean, don't even need to mail, really. You're gonna know because it's gonna be generated. I think those cards are sensitive enough to say whatever it's gonna be, engine twenty-nine or whatever, isn't it? I mean, don't they document what's going in, or is it just a, a fuel card and that's it? I don't know the description about what it is. I hope it's not a hand-printed out slip and then you've gotta, I don't, I wanna reduce the amount of time that's taken up between people that come in the office and have to physically hand bills over. I think it disrupts the workday of whoever's been the financial person here. And then it leads to more questions about, hey, what about this, or hey, what about that? I, I find that to be not really that helpful. So the more that we could while you wanna preserve the check and balance, the, another question is, at what level do we want? Do we really want to, to, for Brandon to have to see a hundred dollar or two hundred dollar diesel fuel bill?
What I was gonna ask you is, why don't we set a minimum amount, or can we set a minimum amount that's gonna go across his desk?
I don't know. I mean, I don't know how many cards are out there. What, what are we talking about, with, with description of this happening? Who has cards of any kind?
I think I'd like to at least see it, at least for the next year, and then maybe change it then. Because I'm still going through all of the bills and taking a look at them.
Do we have anybody online that, I don't wanna lose faces or anyb- Okay, anybody that may wanna say something or not say something? Yes?
Well, one thing I know is this. I don't spend a whole lot of time in the office. So I don't see these paper trails. I don't see the people scurrying around, struggling or not struggling, or whatever they're doing to make this happen. If, if, I, I have to trust in the, the management and the office staff to and I think that's what they're trying to do, figure out a process that, that will work, where they can, where we have consistency, transparency.
Checks and balance.
Yep, because the auditors are gonna say something.
Efficiency.
Yep.
And, and, I've, I've, how many times have we said it's sitting here? I don't wanna micromanage what goes on upstairs. I really but, but to some degree, you know, I mean, if this is what they wanna do, and they, they've got a plan in place.
Oh, I agree, but, but, but the fire departments have to be on board too. John?
I, I will say that, I, I can say for a fact that, I'd like to know what other towns do. Because I know, and some towns cabinish, for instance. When I send a bill out, I know it doesn't hit the, the select board's desk because it's paid so quickly. And, and I think we need, we need to figure out a method so our bills are paid on time every month.
Absolutely.
And, and the weak link is right here. But a lot of towns, the select board meets every week. Some of the smaller towns don't have a town manager and they meet every week.
And, and, and like, but they said the bills-
No, I'm not suggesting that!
Brandon didn't pick up on that. Did you hear what, did you hear what John said?
Twice a week, for now.
No, he said that some, so, he said that some towns don't have a town manager.
Oh, that's true. Wes Windsor, writing.
So do we, do we set a minimum amount to go across our desk, maybe?
What, what is the, what is-
They still have to sign off on all of them.
But what is, who has cards? I, there are some that I just don't wa, you know, we get into philosoph, philosophy again. I don't like to see, when I look at the warrants, third-party reimbursements. I don't like that for some reason, because, and history will show that I've sat here before and there's been some issues, about questions rise. So when you see a card that says Amazon and then it's being reimbursed to somebody else, an employee. There's always a little gray area there about whether or not, what is going on.
So we require a receipt, and I will say, you know, on my town credit card is two thousand dollars a month. I found myself pretty much, I would say fifty to sixty percent of the time, with that being spent, especially during COVID. And I've only been here during COVID stuff. And then I have to use my personal debit card because the town credit card gets declined.
From payment?
For pay, yeah, because, you know, we spent the limit. And so, I mean, I think she went to get pizza one day for the town clerk and it was declined, so she had to use my debit card. And it's happened frequently just now, actually today, it almost declined, so we're, we're gonna purchase, make a one thousand dollar purchase with our own debit card. So I would, I would be hesitant to not allow third-party reimbursements because in cases where the town credit card is declined, we do pay with our debit card first.
Paul? I, so I'm just curious what, the money's there. I mean, why was the limit so low? So what do we do to make the limit different?
Well, it depends on the purchase. So did you go to get the computers when it was like a really lot more money?
Well, yes, that's another thing. We're not able to get the laptops that we ordered because we need to go through a PO.
Yes.
And they don't wanna send them before we pay for them.
Yes.
So we don't know if we're gonna make a deadline, so we might actually have to pull that order back.
So that requires us to vote. I think, no, we already did that. We already voted to buy that. So it has to work its way through Rosalie, Steve Hire, and you, right, this little circle of-
Well, Lenovo has to receive the money first.
Yeah, but we approved it on the last meeting.
But it's difficult to get them that money. Suzanne, can you elaborate a little bit on this? Are you there?
So it would be easier to have the credit card limit opt, because then you can make the purchase just right away and they would send it out. With the purchase order, it gave us a lot of trouble getting the purchase order to the right place, putting the right information in that they needed to process it. They wouldn't accept our standard form, and it has been delayed for over a month. So we have not been able, just on the purchase order, it, it makes it very difficult. But also, I don't know if that's an option, to get an extra credit card, especially just for the town literature with a different limit on it, to have that in his possession versus the, the town's credit card with a smaller limit maybe for other purchases.
I, I don't know, but like this, so specifically for the computer purchase, which is a larger ticket. I'm not understanding why we just don't have like a line of credit at People's Bank, where you call them up and a bank transfer is made in one day. Done. Because it's a-
We had asked-
Go ahead.
Yeah, we had asked Steve Hire to do that, to just do that for one day so we could purchase them. I, I'm not sure what his answer would be right now, but it, it was quite a process and he didn't want to go through that.
Who, who was that?
It would have taken five days at that time, and we had, we thought that it would be faster for us to send a purchase order over. But I think there are a couple steps that would need to happen for him- But I think there are a couple steps that would need to happen for him to do that transaction.
Yeah, okay.
I think it needs all the Google, and I need to follow the purchasing policy.
And I get that, but we authorized quite a lot of borrowing from ourselves here a while ago for him to draw on. I don't think it's that difficult at all to take a business line of credit out for the town, for those kinds of things, like the, and you immediately reimburse it back through the grant that we got, because we got the cash. I mean, I just don't understand how that's difficult, not today. Any other questions? I don't know how to keep moving this along. Go ahead. Suzanne, did you want to talk again?
Would be the treasurer's hand.
Yep, treasurer's hands, great. Joey?
I had a question related to the circle of checks here. What's the general timeframe from the time that you would receive an invoice to the time that we're sending out a check typically?
I mean, I am fairly new, but I thought it wasn't unreasonable that steps one through four could be accomplished in one day.
Yeah, I don't see why I couldn't exist either.
With the exception of this board's approval. Which could be, which could be two to three weeks, depending on the day.
That's kind of where I'm getting to. It seems like that is just the one thing out of all of this that would be a concern for the fire departments, getting back to the root cause.
Or any vendor.
Or any vendor, yeah, so.
It should be, and I correct, I don't know if anybody from Ascutney is on, but I, correct me if I'm wrong. It should be semi-correcting itself with the low price for diesel fuel. I think they get a tremendous break, they don't have to pay the tax. It's almost like off-road price at the pump. So given the fact that it's like two dollars or whatever it is, their, whatever company we're buying from, I mean, it's not the same as at the highway garage.
Oh, yeah.
But it's considerably lower than the, than the pump regular charge for everybody else. I think we get a municipal rate on that card. Do you happen to know? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I wanted to weigh in on that. I think the bills will be paid for a couple times on time, and they lower the credit limit, especially for Ascutney fires. So I just upset a little bit, and they want us to pay on time for a couple of months, and then they will offer to do it more, but that was an issue. They want us to be in on time, and they lower the credit limit, and it was down to five hundred dollars, which is not much to fill up all the vehicles.
No. So, okay, Mike?
We have a handle on this, paying these credit cards on time?
Yes, now we do.
And this is because of the team you've assembled? And the direction you're trying to get going here?
Yes, I have a lot of confidence in the team.
I'd like to speak.
Yes, go.
Hi, it's Josh Dolphin. So for our process, how it's been going for probably almost three years, the general bills, remount power, Comcast, obviously for the fuel we get it from the town garage, those are directly mailed to the town office. The only other bills that I usually bring in would be, anything else that we order, for example, through Amazon, that we pay out of our pocket for. And we bring those invoices or those receipts into the town office. There was, when Darlene was here, there was a process on a reimbursement form that we filled out. And Steve Hire had also, I think, set it up with Darlene, that the receipt of those purchases, along with a copy of the bank stub, and what it's coded to for our account, would be handed in, and then the town would reimburse. But for the other bills that they're directly mailed to the, to the town office, those also include twin line towing, if they do any work on the vehicles, spurs, dingy machine, to any other vehicles, those, all those invoices are billed directly to the town. Once the town records those, as I said, they, they'll take and either scan them in. Suzanne would either shoot a text of them, or Darlene would scan them in and email to me, ask them for if this is our invoice in approval, and then I would sign off on those. So for the majority for the last three years, we didn't, we really not had much issues with this process. Get back to having things be paid on the thirty-day, obviously, that is kind of hard just because of when you guys meet, and when those, I get those invoices into you guys. I mean, it's, it definitely, although they do go past, probably until the forty-five day. I do strongly, strongly agree that any vendor that, other than obviously, items that we purchase out of our pocket, any other vendor, we do have a couple of equipment, for small equipment, vendors that we have. If they, if those invoice are to the town, and there's concern that they haven't paid enough, they really should be contacting and going straight, directly to the town and acquiring. You guys have been having all that information instead of having a representative from each department to take it. Well, I'll have to give back to you, I got a check, see if the check went out, so forth. They should be contacting the town directly to take and get their information and get that squared away. Other than that, like I said, we really haven't had too much issue over the last couple of years with you guys doing it.
Any other comments? Yes?
I think we should let them carry on. There's another step I think that they're going to cover in their presentation, right?
Yes.
Step two, or three here.
Good evening, select board members and residents. As Brandon discussed, some of my responsibilities include fire department invoice tracking, monthly report assistance, statement assistance, logs and coordinate complaints, coordinate meetings, coordinate meetings, coordinate events, updates, fire department webpage, and assists with fire department social media. If anyone needs anything else, please feel free to let me know.
So the fire department invoice tracking, basically what that is, is, I think that's what Josh was just talking about. If a fire chief comes in and brings an invoice, she'll log that information on an Excel tracking sheet, just so we can keep track of what invoices were brought into our office and when. The monthly report assistance is, is basically the monthly report that was spelled out in the contract. So part of her job will be to assist the fire chief or fire chiefs with developing that report every month, which is a lot of data entry. But from that data entry, we can draw, draw conclusions out of that, and be more transparent. Statement assistance, if there is a statement that needs to be written, similar to the issue that we just went through with both fire departments, the principal fire can assist create a new statement. Coordinating, coordinating meetings, coordinating events, updating the fire department webpage when the new website goes live, and assisting the fire departments with social media. Is there anything else that the fire departments would like to see, or the select board added on to the duties and responsibilities we have for the fire departments?
Any comments from the board? Nope, okay. Nothing?
Josh, Josh's microphone is turned green.
I do have a couple of other things, obviously, once, from the last meeting, which I believe was at Ascutney. When we reviewed their concerns, we have not yet got a contract with those concerns or those changes in there from that whole meeting. There is a couple of things that we, that we, I think we're going to take an edge, but we are still waiting to get the contract back with those changes.
Do you, so, run that by me again, Josh, you wanted the change, did you run it by Brandon? Or what, there were some sections in there, or I didn't understand that quite?
And from, from our meeting back at the beginning of this, our November, when we went kind of line by line of Ascutney's concerns regarding the contract, and we just had some general discussion regarding the contract. We had not, obviously, we had been gotten, we hadn't received the contract from that meeting with those, with any of those changes that are-
Can you be specific to the section, or no?
No, no, I mean, there was, there was quite a few sections that we, that we discussed at that meeting at the Ascutney Fire Station.
There you go, right out, Josh. I guess I wonder why that would affect.
Yeah, I don't know. There's a question up on the right there, Brandon, can you pull the microphone closer to you? Yep, there you go.
Sorry.
I don't know, somebody's saying they couldn't, can you get it closer to himself? Nice, I don't know if anybody couldn't hear you, or what.
It was Sapa TV.
How do you want to proceed?
I just forwarded Josh over the contract that we edited, the one that the board has tonight.
Those edits are in this for tonight?
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments about the contract, yes?
They're not highlighted though, right?
They are not highlighted.
Go ahead, Mike.
I received another list from Darren today. That I will, I don't think it's appropriate to go into those at this point. I'll sit down with Brandon and go over.
Well, I would hope it would be shared, a list of changes to the contract, or-
Yes, concerns that they have.
Of this thing that we're looking at tonight?
We're trying to nail this down tonight.
Yeah.
Or some, some sense of, some sense of, I would think so, some sense of direction.
Yeah. And, I mean, I'm looking at a date on this of October 5th, is that, is that updated?
I apologize, the left-hand corner.
When was this revision made?
It was made on November 10th, 2020.
Okay, so the date is a little off.
Yeah, because it's the same as the one I'm looking at on paper.
Okay, just the date is off.
Okay, no, it's fine.
Yep.
If you want me to read through these, I will, if you want to keep up with them.
In a general sense, though, does the board have any comments about sections by section? I mean, I see lists, for instance, on funds and money and training and things like that. Can we, can we talk about some of these sections? I mean, I, we got to, as John said, you know, we, some of us are, I think all of us have heard about different things from time to time, and I really think it's safe to say what, what people might feel works, and maybe what doesn't work. So, I don't know.
Michael brought it up quite a while ago, when we first started reviewing this, with 2.10, emergency medical services. And that seemed to be a little bit too short, for lack of a better word. I talked quickly with Brandon today, and I don't know, did, did you have a chance to come up with anything with Dale?
I didn't, we were, we were, I tried to get to it, and we were all the way up until the last second, until the meeting started.
And I think what brought it to light especially was the incident that we had to address at Ascutney Fire Station. I mean, I think some wording needs to be in there, not only what's expected, what's not expected.
Would that not, maybe we don't want to change this section, though. Go back to section 2.1.
Okay.
Services provided.
Okay, that might work.
Yes.
And put it in there.
Well, and I, I don't know what everybody else is thinking, but, you know, my thought is that to logically place the sequence about what happens, so someone dials 911, I'm reading it here, you know, upon call from Heart for Dispatch, and then the nature of the call is discussed. And from that moment on, it's, I think, depending on the calls, would, would trigger the response and what's going on, and every call is different. So, I guess where I'm going with this, which is what the same observation I made at the meeting, the other, at the other places, and any place frankly, when one, when one, and I think that Dale Gerard made this clear when I said it, when the call goes out for the ambulance, the ambulance is dispatched, and then they are, they have two roles to stabilize and transport. What event that is that's requiring an ambulance. So when the fire departments, I think, role, which I think we've all gone over already once, or maybe more, is to support that job.
Right.
The role.
One thing that seems to be confusing, or maybe not here too properly, is the chain of command during a medical event.
Yeah.
Correct.
Yeah, and the town-
And we hire somebody to do that.
Yep, the town contracts.
I have that contract right here, from Golden Cross. In 2.1, the second half of 2.1, Heart for Dispatch Voice Caller Paging System Upon Notification Of A Fire Or Emergency By Any Other Means, The Fire Department's Firefighting And Rescue Equipment And Adequate Certified Qualified Personnel To Operate The Same, They're Promptly Dispatched, that comes before the Heart for Dispatch. And then Making Diligent Efforts To Control And Extinguish All Fires And Control Or Mitigate Emergencies. We talk about services provided in regards to the fire departments here, without any indication of the EMS services we've hired and contracted with for the town. And how, or who, who's in charge, at what point, who takes over? You know, what, we're saying we want to dispatch the fire departments to all, you know, medical calls and everything. In a large part, this does talk about the west side, because it is further away from Golden Cross, which comes out of Clermont, and there's a delayed reaction on the west side. So when the tone goes out, our guys are going to respond. And every call is going to be different. What, what is expected of them? What do they, what can they do, what can't they do? Whether that's in law, or whatever, certification, or whatever. And after that, when Golden Cross shows up, what happens? Chain of Command, who, we contract with them. If it's an emergency situation, do our guys stand down at that point? And turn it over and just, you know, have a medical update briefing with Golden Cross? And then that's it, they step back? Do we need to talk to Golden Cross and ask them how they would like to see this go? Because we do contract with them, we pay them for those, these services. Do we want to look into splitting the service with another town? Maybe Springfield or somebody else to cover the west side? Some of this starts to get speculative, but what do you want to put in here for services provided? And, you know, again, Shannon, come in, who's in charge? Who, at what point this takes over?
There is some, there is some, and I don't have it in front of me, there is some obligation and duty and law for certification and whatnot on who provides what. So when we contract with Golden Cross, or any other ambulance service for medical care, Dale Gerard has told me that there are some statutes in New Hampshire and Vermont that say some things to the concerns that you did. So who can do what, when, where, is, is in those documents. So when the town, which we do, enter into an agreement to ask somebody to provide something, that their obligation is to make sure they're licensed, insured, and so forth and so on, to make those decisions. But, but he also admitted, which I, you know, the ambulances in any town in Weathersfield is not a hospital. So their role is, and he confirmed it at one of our meetings, to stabilize and transport.
Okay, so what is the role of the fire department?
To assist. Well, it depends on every call. I mean, if the fire department is asked to use the jaws of life to free the person that's caught, to- I mean, if, if the fire department is asked to use the jaws of life to free the person that's caught to make the medical decision on. You can see how a domino effect goes down the line to ask. So it depends. My answer is short, but, but it's a matter of fact on the call.
And, and it also depends on, we, and it's not unusual for a member of either fire, fire department to be on Golden Cross. And, and they may have the expertise and credentials to provide more than Joe Blow showing up.
Yep, you just don't know. Although we did learn something at the last meeting, that if they're not on the, 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 uh, document that's provided by the carrier, which in this case is Golden Cross, then the only way that they can assist is through the Good Samaritan law.
Right.
So that you're, you're a bystander, you happen to be a doctor, you, you're skiing on the mountain, you're a doctor, somebody broke their leg. You're assisting voluntarily without being affiliated with the entity.
So in as few words as possible, are these some of the things that need to go into this area?
I know, I think that, I think that Gerard told me that tho- those words are located in the laws that they, that Golden Cross happens to work.
And we could make reference to those in this, in this section.
Yes. Did you have a question, Paul?
You guys are going all around it, so that, that's exactly what, it's already, it's already there. Josh and Darren already know how this should work. We don't need to put this in there and tell them how to do this. And we've already seen that when it doesn't function properly, that, you know, there's questions that are asked. Um, and yes, nobody in this town, and Josh, Darren, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but nobody in this town, unless they are toned out under Golden Cross, can do patient care. Am I correct by saying that?
Anybody turn the mic on?
Regardless of.
It's talking of like CPR calls this morning, so CPR calls.
Right, which is the same thing I can do, the same thing I can do. So nobody, nobody can do that. We don't have EMS service in this town.
But if we don't put at least minimal wordage in here, I, I agree with you, but to a certain extent, but if we don't duplicate at least some wordage in here for them, for us to reference when things don't, are, are being done that beyond their ability. I want something we can step back on and say, that, that we can hang our hat on.
I don't want to step on Golden Cross toes.
Right.
Hire them for a job. And, and I, when I talked to Brandon, that, that was the first thing he said, why don't we talk to them and find out what they want? How do they want it to be handled when they show up? What do they want to see happen?
I don't think this is generic to Weathersfield. I think that, that he serves about six or eight towns or whatever they do. They have multiple ambulances and, and work staff. I, they, I, I would imagine that he's governed by law and he's governed by whatever the other towns are doing as well. I know that when some, when you just said, well, can we split the services? I know that Charlestown had their own ambulance. They are under the tax burden now and they've decided to, um, make its way to Golden Cross for service.
So they're selling an ambulance?
Well, no, I, I don't know about that, but, 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 but I got told that by a couple of people, so I.
They're paying Springfield $500 a call when they have to cover.
So, so it is a matter of money and service and whatnot. And so who provides what, when, where, what entity? Everybody's under the gun as far as service and, and what's offered and how do you keep up with the times?
Now going forward, at some point, not today, but I don't necessarily know if it's a bad thing to try to figure something out for the town. Not saying Golden Cross won't be, but we do have people in town that could do things. So how do, how does the town get to the point where you could have an EMS responder on a fire department that could go out and do EMS work?
Personally legal by the state.
I guess, I guess it depends, cause that, that person needs to be affiliated with the provider.
Exactly right.
Okay.
And it's, and they've got to be affiliated with department, uh, uh, an EMS department and they've got to be under the local.
Be licensed.
Yeah, but there, there's more to it, but I mean.
There's more to it.
I can get you the information on how to do that too.
Yeah, but no, maybe, maybe you're missing the point. It, it, it has to be with the provider that's insured and licensed to do it. The town is not.
And that requires a willingness on the part of the provider.
Unless, and, and, or unless the town decides to do something.
That's correct.
Yeah, but I don't see the town getting into that business right now. I just.
Assuming that the, the state laws and, and rules, uh, trump everything or, or take care of any particular issues. I still think that we have an issue in, in the past with incident command and medical battles.
I think, John, I think you're right. And I think that, I, I think that a paragraph should be put in here somewhere.
Who's in charge of medical events?
Yes, I think that's helpful. Yes, I agree.
So are you talking on 2.1?
Um, probably, early on, so that the other, it's, it's, somebody can mute that please, somebody's got children.
Holy.
Off with the mic, please. It's Suzanne.
I don't see any green light.
Can you mute off with the mic, somebody?
Hey, click on caller's new microphone. It left a little bit.
Um, I think you're on to something, John, on the first, because the, you know, it's better to say, to higher up to try to distinguish what the roles are. I think too. I agree with you. Yes.
So we're adding a paragraph in there for roles for EMS.
Um, does anybody have any?
They just decided we're going to add, we want to, we want a paragraph in section 2.1 on roles and responsibilities with.
Visiting services right at the front.
For visiting service, with EMS.
Is, is, uh, section 2.2 for training, there's a blank here with yellow. It says that shall hold both the fire departments shall tr- hold training sessions at least blank times a year. What does the board feel about that?
Is there state law or any kind of law that requires minimums?
No. No.
Big.
I don't want to mandate, if they want to do it, let them do it if they don't.
Do we have that turned off, please?
It's the top middle one.
No, it's Suzanne, it's Suzanne, isn't it?
I got it.
Okay, good.
I mean, myself personally.
Any comments?
I don't, if they want to do something, fine, but I don't want to mandate.
I want to read these words carefully. It says both fire departments shall, that's a legal term. Hold training sessions at least blank times a year.
That's not mandated then.
That's mandated. Shall is a, shall is not a wiggle word. I can tell you what I feel about it. I'm just waiting the board to weigh in.
Personally, I don't think two drills a year together is an unreasonable requirement. But on the other hand, we shouldn't have to tell them.
This, this, this isn't about training together though. It doesn't stay training together.
My first.
Point training coordinated.
This, this was.
Yeah, it does.
Played here originally to train together. It was not meant originally to train separately. It was meant to train together. I don't know where that wordage fell out of the agreement.
Um, where'd it change? I'm still looking at.
Members of their department.
Oh, yeah.
Members of what?
Um, I don't, I don't see, uh, any sense in forcing these two, two departments to try to work together. If they want to work together, they can do it on their own. You just got done saying that, John. We shouldn't have to tell them that they.
Yeah.
And, and, and I've never heard that they don't work together good on scene. If they want to train together, fine. If they don't want to train together, I, I, I don't see where we need to get in the middle of that.
I would go along with that. I think it's sad that we think we need to.
Yes.
Yes. And that, that day, that ship is.
You will get along.
That ship has sailed for me too.
You know, so, so, I mean.
I'm done with that phrase in there right there. I'm done with the, I'm done with the forcing of anything.
So, so maybe take out the X number of times per year, um.
I didn't even, I don't even.
They got the whole sentence.
I don't even leave a line in there.
Okay, take the whole thing out? Uh, um, or, or just say at their, shall hold training sessions, um.
When they feel like it.
At their own discretion.
It's a waste of print.
Yeah, yeah, take it out.
The sentence.
Take it out.
In fact, I would, I would say that to the same of anything else here in this whole agreement that's saying, you know, thou shalt get along. I'm, I'm done with all that. That ship's out of the, that's out of the dock for me. I'm done, I'm, we're wasting our time, because there, all the time we've tried to say that and it doesn't work, so you know what? Time to move on.
It seemed to go the other way actually.
Yeah, exactly. It makes it worse. Yes.
Uh, so next is, uh, well, actually, this would be a good time if we're going through this in order like this. Um.
What time is it?
Uh, 8:36. Uh, page two, section 1.3, so that's going backwards. This is from Darren. Uh, how will the partially owned be dealt with? Are, are they going to pay us for the portion that we own?
Of what, what are you talking about?
Uh, this is section 1.3 and it says, upon termination, A, uh, upon termination of this contract by either fire department, all town owned or partially owned assets will be returned to the town. And the question is, uh, partially owned assets, um, if they're returning assets that are partially owned by the town and partially owned by them, is the town going to pay them for their share? That's the question.
No. My opinion.
Um.
Yeah, hate to be that way, but I would say no also. I see his point, but in the future, hopefully there are no partially owned.
Right.
Yes.
And I think we need to make some steps to get to that stage.
Yes.
And I think my answer to the question would be, I'm going big. I want to know what we're talking about for dollar amount. And if we had to put an article on there, if they felt the need to express the desire for a buyout, that we entertain the process of doing that, to go in and buy it all out. Let them disperse the funds as they see fit. Go before the voters and say, you know what, we're all in on all one fire, okay? But that means that requires all the assets. And I don't care if it's the station, I don't care if it's the trucks, I don't care if it's a hose, I don't care if it's anything. And if they want to give, then congratulations, because they're going to get to use it. The things, they're going to get to use it.
Here are some things for the contract. The members do not agree to turn over building and the lease and other equipment at this time.
That's a problem.
Yeah.
Back at, at the next.
Back at a contract that looks like this again.
Looked at zero.
Um, I, I, um, we get to adopt the contract.
Right.
They can sign it or not sign it. There's a town in Vermont that recently just said, okay, you're both done. And they went to, uh, mutual aid to cover their towns.
Now, there's like three, three towns that, uh.
Yeah, just.
There's one south, one in the middle and one north. Irisburg or something.
So, you know, um, there's also RFP, we could RFP this. You know, we still have to create a contract to get to an RFP. You know, what are we, what are we requesting, uh, the proposal of services to be? And here's the contract.
If, if that, if that is the case, then my response to that might be something like this. Has an entity, and I'm not going to pick on the fire departments, but has the, has an entity in the town used the town's contribution financially as a reference on any type of loan that's been provided? I think we have a right to know that. So if we're going to start, if we're going to start drawing lines here, then has any other entity used the town's financial, uh, contribution annually? Been used to seek credit or payment or some sort of a bank statement or an asset and liability statement? Uh, for their, uh, financial condition?
There, there's another, go, go ahead.
Another facet of that would be, has any town owned asset paid for by the taxpayers been used to generate money? To, to purchase equipment?
Oh, the answer is yes.
That Esteny Fire Department now claims as theirs.
Or either any department, don't pick on any one.
You're right, you're right, you're absolutely right.
Um, and, and another aspect is in, with all of the fundraising, who's actually contributing? You know, if, even if they're doing fundraising and then they're saying that's their money, where, who gave them that money? For the most part, it's going to be the taxpayers of this town that did that.
We're getting like.
But.
Generalities here, but what we should do is compartmentalize some of these comments. Because, John, what you just raised can be solved with a motion. And, and I don't know if we want to be prepared to take some action tonight or not. But, but we could change, for instance, anything to do with the policy about not only just fire equipment, but any equipment owned by the town. So that, um, financial gain under any circumstance shall be returned to the town. Now, I'm not saying to dump it in the general fund. I'm saying that if one of these trucks goes out for duty, that it gets put into the truck replacement fund. I don't want the money to use, period. Because that just helps them bu- buy more equipment for them, not me, for them.
Yep.
Um, so I, I think that we can make decisions, um, that are going to be helpful down the line. And we're not going to be selecting forever, but, but the future boards will make, will find, I think, that that would be easier. I really do. And that might, go ahead, who's online?
It's Josh Kova.
Okay.
I'd like to back up to you. So it's the second meeting that you've actually mentioned, you know, buyout. Um, is the board going to consider officially asking both departments what that will look like? So that it could be presented back to the board to determine if that is a worthy step moving forward? I mean, round and talk around, let's see what those numbers look like. See what the men, see what the departments think their assets are worth.
I don't have any problem with asking. I don't know what the board wants to do, but it would, it would solve the, it seems to be a battle all the time. But although I don't know what you just said to me, and, and I don't know, it's not fair to have that not presented to us, that the position of, of one entity says, now I don't want to do that without them being here, without me hearing whatever's going on. So I, I don't know what to think about that, but that's where I'm at. So I've listened to all these things go on for five or 10 years or more. I think that, I think, I, everybody has heard me say this before and I'll say it again. I think the best way to, for the town to do anything under the fire services is to control all the finances, to work with the volunteers that we cannot afford to pay people to do rightfully, even though they work really hard at doing it. And let them use the machinery that the town buys through the financial process, all of it. And if it's used for, uh, a scene and then they get reimbursed somehow, all of those funds can be easily tracked through finance to replace the things that they use. I really do. I, I think that, I think we have to let, we have to let go of some things and to take some things. We, we, we restrict the money regardless of anybody as a selectman here or regardless that Brandon's here or not. The structure would be in place and then it goes through a process through the volunteers that serve the community through a budgetary process. I think it's a hybrid of the, of the, uh, of the town actually just trying to control everything. I think that's too much for me in, in this small town. To have us tell them what to do or to have, hire somebody to tell them what to do, I, I don't like that picture. I think that that person, whoever it might be, would be put in a very difficult position on the scenes about, about who, who he might, who he or she might pick as being on the scene and say to go home and all of this stuff. I think we'd be creating a problem that could be an unintended consequence.
We'd be in the middle of micromanaging again. I just got done talking about that earlier. I, I don't like doing it anywhere.
Can you go back and, and read what you just read again about not, not selling the station or any of the equipment? Is that?
Here are some things for the contract. Uh, and this is from Darren Spalding. The members do not agree to turn over building and the lease and other equipment at this time.
Well, and that's a little different than asking for a buyout about what kind of money we're talking about.
Yeah, that's, that's, I don't want to get rid of it.
Yeah, but they, but.
Turn it over. I don't want to give it to you.
But, but they don't understand that the governance of this would still lie with them. It's just the ownership and the purchasing and the expenses would come to the town. I, I don't see, I don't see a negative effect of that. I really don't. Because we would inherit whatever they've got out for a balance or it'd be an article for the voters to vote on in March, um, of the station upkeep, of the responsibility, of the insurances, of everything. It would be the burden of the town then. It wouldn't be on the burden of, of them. Or the west side as a matter of fact. Anything.
Do they need to keep the building to maintain their status and, I know we talked about it, I don't know.
West side, that was the route they wanted to go or needed to go.
Does Esteny have to do the same thing or is it different?
Up to what?
Maintain the building to maintain their status.
Oh, I don't know.
That's a 501(c)(3)?
Sure, yeah.
And the fact they're sitting on state land.
Legal, so I don't think you need a building to maintain a nonprofit's status.
That, that's exactly right, Josh.
Even if you did, you could rent it for a dollar.
Yeah.
Something. I don't know.
Josh, isn't there something in your, um, original, when, when the land was being quit?
I get that right?
Yeah.
Um.
I think it's like a hundred year lease.
Yeah. That, that gets a little stiffy.
Correct, that was, uh, well, started talking about the discussion regarding the municipal. Um, and there is a letter stating that. Um, in order for us to, oh, to keep the land, we would have to, um, stay as a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). own, uh, to keep the land, we would have to, um, stay as a nonprofit 501(c)(3), um, but with the ability to rent or lease for a dollar and still, that still keeps it in our, in our name.
Believe it or not, I'm going to drop some on you for, for some information. Gene Adams, who's still alive, and this is why it's really important to know all this stuff, was the executor of the will of the Robinson Family Estate that gave the property to the West Side to build the fire department. Nitka Loferam in Ludlow was the law agency that made all that happen. So the records are still available, the people still alive that made all that happen a long time ago, which is really unusual. You have a question?
Yeah, this is, uh, the direct question for Josh and, and his department. The only way you guys sounded like you were turning your equipment over to the town and your building and all that was if we went full municipal for the whole town. Um, I, I guess what I'm trying to understand is, we do have on the books a municipal fire department in town. We have no people, no anything. Even if Scotty doesn't go that route, is that still what you guys want to do and, and bring your equipment? Let us take it over, let us do all that? And we'll have that and we can still contract out on the other side? Or are you only in if you get rid of that side as far as having, uh, a separate fire department there and we only have one? Is that a loaded question, or can you answer that?
Yeah, probably would be, obviously we'd have to go back, obviously when we first stated that and indicated what we would do, can do, uh, would we be willing as a department to do was, was, was only the assumption of the town having that one single municipal fire department. Or, um, if, if it would, if we still would be willing to do that, um, as you guys are talking, um, there is, um, you know, trying to figure out how to, uh, for the town to, um, take the financial burden of it, yes, that is one, that, there's two sides to this fire service and, and you have the money and the budget side is one, and then you have the, um, management and structure of personnel is the other. So we're still, i- if you guys, the town takes over the financial burden and, and all the payments and all that, take that. We're only, we're only still solving one half of, of the original problem for the last 40 years.
The only other challenge with the money side of it is it, it's, it's, it's hard for every department in the town to get money and, and I, I understand that, and I watched some of this, and I watched the healthcare conversation earlier, and everybody wants a piece of the pie, but that also goes for fire services, and, and I know that, uh, you know, Josh had a presentation last year that he was, he was looking to bring, you know, the West Weatherfield Fire Department into the future and, and try to make things better, and hard frankly, the select board didn't even take five minutes to look at it. Uh, it, it was rather disappointing that they didn't give his proposal the time of day to consider it or look towards the future for it. But that, that's, that's the other challenge, is if the town does hold all the cards, what protections do the departments have to continue your function? And if the town holds all the cards for one side of town but not the other, what does that look like? I'm personally in favor of Dave's plan, I think that, that, that my, and I'll stick my neck out here, and I'd be happy to say in front of the membership, I think what Dave brought up last meeting was an outstanding idea, it's an outstanding set in the right direction. It gives some control over basically the most expensive things in the fire service, allow the town to put a real capital plan together and stick to it.
I was hoping that you were going to add this, because I feel strongly about it. The, I don't think any one of us here are qualified to operate the departments as much as the members do.
Uh-uh.
And so that's why I, I balk at saying that I'm going to be smarter than you guys, and that's why I don't do that as emergency management, I don't want to do that. Um, I'd rather pay attention to the, to the ladder of whatever dispatch or whatever the entities are doing. I don't see the day in this town anytime soon that that's going to change, um, with the financial picture and 2,800 people. Where we would have a town entity be perceived to be the answer to all ends to do that. I think it's going to start another fire, and no pun intended, that where we don't need to do. I think all of you guys, despite on the both departments or whatever, you go through the training, you get the licenses, there may be a little squabble every now and then, but for the most part, we may hear a little complaint about something, about whatever. I, I just don't, I don't see the amount of, of, uh, negative, I see more positive. So the governance, the governance, I just want to reiterate this. I think it is the town's job, looking at all of the volunteers that serve in this capacity, meaning gear, equipment, and the equipment changes, uh, and, and, and mutual aid is a big part of that, where we go and then we receive. But I think the town has an obligation to outfit whatever workers, and we need to trust them about whether or not they need new gear or not, or whatever, and tell us, and then the whole town jointly comes together and votes on it as part of the general fund budget. Anybody, anybody have any-
The other share about the financials is, I, I think that when we look at the total budget for the fire services, I think it could be spent in a more efficient way that would get us to a better place in, with regard to equipment. Uh, you know, I think there's ways, there's, there's been purchases on both sides of town that the select board was not super in favor about. Uh, you know, just because the most recent one was a ladder truck, doesn't mean that we can't look back to the Argo that there was some, you know, at that time I was on a Scotty fire, and there was, there was some challenges with the Argo purchase at the West Side. The town maintaining control over all of the wheels prevents all of that.
Yes.
Yes, it does.
It goes to the motors, and then all of this, I'm going to call it hate and discontent, even though it's not really hate, but again, challenges with both departments over the years is eliminated. And that's why I'd like to see both, I'd like to see an official request from the board, the both departments, to come forward with what those numbers look like, if they're willing to sell, if they're not willing to sell, if they're willing to give, or what have you, so that it can come back officially to the board.
I would, I, I, I think it may be time to sort out of maybe a few of these, I think it is actually doable.
Do you need a motion?
Well, I would like to, yes, that a motion is, I, I'm fully ready for that, I've been ready for that for years.
Okay.
Where the town, where the town would, and, yes, I don't know how you want to word it, but I'll give you a try.
Look at what the financials would be for a total purchase buyout. Is that what you're getting at?
No, I was looking at, I was looking at a motion for, for, to, to set the bar right here today, to say that, that any and all machinery purchased here, uh, should be with town funds only and only by the, to be used in conjunction with the emergency services of the town of Weathersfield would seek this board's approval to be used in the, in that, at that charge, only.
Are you trying to limit it to the wheel vehicles, or?
Well, no, not hoses and everything, yes, wheels. You want to be, you want to go deeper?
Yeah.
Okay, but you can make, you're free to make motions. I'm ready to listen.
I'd look at all assets with the exception of the building.
I don't have a problem with making some moves, I just don't.
Is that a motion, John?
Well, and remember-
Including what, John?
I, I need you to remember this before you make the motion.
Well, why don't we make it two ways, why don't we ask them for the numbers for their, um, for the wheel vehicles that they feel that they got into it, and then a second one for all assets with the exception of the real estate.
The, the, the problem with limiting the, or whatever, remember that we have two reserve accounts. We have one that specifically identifies wheels, motorized units. And then we have one for equipment, which would be hoses and, and gear and so forth. So, so I think you want to identify what is to be used as the, in the town of Weathersfields, I'll just name it very broad, emergency services. I think we should specify, because to make it like wheels and hoses would kind of make the water a little muddy when we have two reserve funds.
He didn't say wheels and hoses, but he said, he, he said all assets except buildings. That's everything.
Shall be, shall be solely purchased with only town Weathersfield funds or not?
But he broke it into two pieces.
So you're going to-
He, he, he broke it into two pieces where you have, the, the, just the wheel.
Give you two numbers.
Or all.
I didn't want to get into the buyout, I just meant from this day forward. I mean, Josh Campo made a pretty good, a pretty good statement right there, when he said, look, I, I really didn't like the, the, the new ladder that we all got surprised on, that, that, hey, we might need a ladder, but I, I think we should be in on decisions like that when it's being used on behalf of the town.
Absolutely, 100%.
But I also appreciate his-
Honesty.
Analogy or whatever representation to the Argo, I think we should have been in on any equipment like that. So I think there's a separation though between wheels and hoses or gear.
So are you asking for it?
The only thing I'd like to include, if you're going to talk about solely town funds, is, is what's not, whatever we do, let's not limit ourselves by federal grants, so if certain wording needs to be adopted into a policy for federal grants to be able to have that money go in, that can be, that can be huge for us as well.
It doesn't have to be federal, it could be any-
What would those be, Josh? What, what would tipi- a typical federal grant before?
So I think, I, I think the most recent ones were air packs for a Scotty. Uh, I believe, uh, I don't know if, geez, the most recent one was our, our cascade system, but, but some, there was some significant grants, the four inch hose, uh, was a grant. Uh, I know Scotty went for a ladder truck a couple of times and, and didn't get that.
Okay.
Not always guaranteed, but I would say, I, I mean, I could guess, there's well over a hundred thousand dollars in grant money sitting between those two stations right now.
Okay, all right, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, Josh, I got a question, I don't want to lose my train of thought on this, I'm old. Um, so, um, if you get a grant and you buy an air pack system or whatever, um, hoses and all of that stuff, and you have it, you might not get another grant. So does that belong to the department, is that what you're saying, that, that it would then belong to the department? Um, because you got it with grant money, uh, and you might need it replaced someday, and would that not be from the town's money?
So how it's, how it's been done, uh, probably in the last eight years, uh, we've received, uh, I think four or five federal grants, uh, ranging probably up to almost 150, 160,000 dollars. Uh, that, with that, um, equipment was radios, hose, air packs, um, cascade system, um, and some other miscellaneous stuff. Um, so those, when we fill out those grants, we're filling those grants out as the West Weathersfield Volunteer Fire Incorporated 501(c)(3). Um, once, once we fill those out, those, those grants not filled out, um, with, with the town of Weathersfield's name on them. Um, when, when we fill those out, we get approved for those. We, with our, um, region and population, we have to, uh, provide, believe it, it's, um, five, five or 10% of whatever the amount, total amount of, of the grant request is. Um, and what, what we've had done is that is money that we, um, have any of those amounts with either fundraising money, um, which are then, um, labeled as department owned equipment. Um, none of, um, and, and I'm assuming probably over the years, both departments would be in the same boat. Um, there is not, are not denying that there's been, has that money that's been generated, that has come back to the department, and some of that money has been applied to some of these grants. So that, that's, as of right now, all of, all of that equipment, which is all equipment that, that we, that we do need, both departments, um, to take in function, um, are, are, are at least for ours, for, for our department, our, um, categories, uh, as, as department owned equipment at this point.
Need, need, hold it, hold it, need a motion to extend the meeting 30 minutes?
So move.
Their second?
Yep.
Most of them main seconded to extend the meeting 30 minutes, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
It's going to matter, right, John?
I'm going to suggest, I'm going to suggest the way, then we need to break this down, because it seems to be getting more complicated as we start talking. I, I cringed when I heard the word, you know, hazmat money being used for other, other sources. Um, I think we probably should go to the, to the, uh, town's purchasing policy. Because that's what we had before, where if, if anything is purchased or amended somehow, and it's, and it didn't get warned for this meeting. So I think that might be where to go with the purchasing and the use of things that are to be used as far as wheels or, or in the fire departments. I think it would have to go to the, um, a subsection underneath the town's purchasing policy.
My question never really got answered though.
Okay, what was?
And that was, you, you know, I, 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 I love those grants, get those grants, get that money and buy that gear. But, but what I was asking is, you, you might not get a grant the next time for that same gear. And if you need replacement of that stuff, where does it come from?
So to answer your question, I, um, for both departments, because both departments are applying uh, for these equipment through each, each department, 501(c)(3),
Mm-hmm.
Not a, not as a whole as a town. Um, if we, I say for air packs, we need air packs. They are past expiration, we apply for the grant. If we do not get the grant, then, uh, the only option would be is to continue using expired, out of date, NPA packs, or we come to the town and ask, um, for that, for that money to be, uh, asked from the taxpayers.
I think that was the point, so you have to ask the town for replacement at that point if you don't get the grant. You're not going to use outdated equipment.
That's correct. I don't want you using outdated equipment, no.
Can, can we start looking at some of these other titles here on this, on the contract? I mean, if you, if you turn to, 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 for instance, then there's no, I'm not, I'm not picking these out, it just happens to be where I've got, uh, it on right now, it says title to property 6.1. Does everybody understand that the title to all vehicles and apparatus acquired in whole or in part with money derived from the town funds shall be in the name of the town? If a department adds additional items onto a truck, this will be considered a donation. That means that the department's name will not be on the title. Section 6.2, title to all capital equipment acquired in whole or in part with Weathersfield funds shall be in the property, uh, of the town. This, you know, is a change. And it just means now that there's a move to, you buy it by the town, you get to use it by the departments, but it's titled to the town, any add-ons, any other things that are being derived for in, in uh, use with, and I, I don't know whether Brandon, I don't think, because he wasn't here, but I don't know if Ed Morris was involved in any of this grant writing. And, and I heard Josh say earlier that they were using the town of Weathersfield's name, then the town manager has to be involved in that grant.
They were not using the town's name.
I heard, I heard him say, I thought I heard him say that they, that they were.
I believe, Josh, did you say?
That is, that is, no, it is not.
Okay.
I'm saying, i- i- if we weren't, then, uh, obviously the town, the town could, obviously with having a municipal, we had a municipal, alright, the town could be using and applying for the grants, um, just like every other, and, and the rest of the career departments or municipal departments, but for the grants that we acquired, it was through our 501(c)(3).
Okay. That may give you a leg up to get the grant though, I mean, you know, I, I, there, I think there's an advantage. I, I don't know about the competition between ta- uh, town or city owned type things, but there may be an advantage for a nonprofit, I don't know. Is, is, um, as we move down through here for insurances, um, this, to me, will link the, the, the thing about insurances, it gets rid of the questions about who's responsible for everything. I mean, we just had kind of a dust up about, about anything that was owned by the departments or, or not as far as insurance goes. If there's a slate where we own everything, we know we got to pay for everything, including repairs, diesel fuel, insurance, I don't care what, whatever. There's no question about it, it's just like at the highway garage. We don't see, some, somebody in there says, oh, wait a minute, I own a tire on the backhoe, so you got to do that. I don't know, it solves a, it solves a host of problems-
Yep.
-to make that move.
There, there is another question that came up about insurances that I don't see clarified in this agreement. I know it came up in the past. I know it came up in the past too. Uh, we are under the impression that the town's workman's comp policy does not cover those who are self-employed, which is a majority of both departments. That was supposed to be looked into and squared away.
Okay.
7.3. So it is squared away by the looks.
Very well, Joey, well I get to that section, so. You know, I, I, it's always been, that's always been there Joey, I believe. Uh, but I know that there was a member of one of the departments that received, uh, that, that got an injury a number of years ago that was self-employed and his wages were not taken care of, and he lost a significant amount of money, and it was kinda just, quite frankly, swept under the rug. Uh, that, that shouldn't happen to those that are volunteer to try to keep the town safe.
So would, you wanna see an actual specified carrier, an actual amount of coverage? Is that what you're saying?
I think it just needs to be specified that those that are self-employed are still covered.
We, we can ask VLCT about that. I, I don't, I don't know.
I can see that requiring, um, um, tax documents, 1040 filings. If we're gonna cover wages.
And I don't, and I don't think that's an issue.
Yep.
I mean, I totally understand that there should be accountability.
Yep.
Um, and, and would expect that.
Yep.
But we should, we should be taking care of everybody because I, I think, I think a lot of people are self-employed just so they can, quite frankly, provide services better and be more available.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I wasn't disagreeing with you, I just wanna make sure that we know what we're paying for.
John, I'm looking at the screen, and we got anybody on from Scotty? Even listening? I don't know. Who is?
Colby, Colby was on for quite a while.
He was, he's gone, so we're having a one-sided conversation.
Yep.
By, not by our choice. Uh, I'm just pointing that out, that, that.
And continually, there's only participation from one side.
And this is why I put a motion on the floor several months ago to have a decision by when?
Yeah. And, and regardless, I think you said December 10th, and regardless, this, this, the old contract runs out in 31 days.
No, they got it extended, they extended, did they?
No, this, we're in the extension.
They all agreed to extend, however, in a, a contract extension has not been signed.
Well, so we're operating without a contract.
Then.
Okay. Yeah, but, but.
That'll make budget talks easy.
But, but the board can make some decisions, uh, I think structurally that I think will help. I, I, you know what, if, 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 you know, maybe, maybe this will be painful for both, which would be probably the ultimate, I don't know. Um, but I, I keep getting back to the same old thing. I think the town has a duty to fund all of the equipment that's necessary. I think that goes through, that's not to say that the horses are all out of the barn. I think that that comes under, under budgetary move. And then, the, the, uh, I don't think the town belongs, unless it's a structure, as we talked about earlier, with the services provided, where we have medical, then that needs to have a clear definition. But the operations, I just don't see changing dramatically for the people. Even Josh Campo just pointed it out about who can respond. You can't respond if you're, if you're working for somebody in a plant. But moreover, the, the contractors do have the ability to break away from their job and to go if they wanted to. I think there's structure to some of this. That would be helpful. It'll stop the confusion.
It, I don't know if we're still, I gotta be honest, I'm not sure what we're talking about, but if, I wanna go back to the proposed contract.
Yep.
Uh, Article 4.
Section 4?
Yeah, uh, 4.2. I'm gonna start with B, which is, um, pages aren't numbered, but anyway.
Yep.
Um, it, the service agreement, I don't think is a wise move. Uh, fire equipment is, is, eh, one, you're probably not gonna save any money and it may actually cost you more.
Right.
And B, fire equipment tends to be pretty specialized.
Yes.
People that certify the pumps don't normally change the oil, but anyway.
So C you would eliminate?
I'd, I'd strike that in its entirety.
You got that Brandon, me too. I don't, I don't know, I don't need that.
And D, uh, this gets a little stickier. Um, here we go with the 7525, and 75% of, of hazmat.
Where, where are you now?
S- s- same article, just down to, to, to D.
Okay.
Um, 75% is going into, if we go with this contract, 75% is gonna go into there.
You're, you're on an old contract.
Yeah, you're on the old one.
That's already been eliminated?
Yes.
Okay.
So you're not on the screen?
Yeah, the one on your screen, but the one you was talking about is still, C was still C. So to strike that service agreement.
Yeah, C was, C was.
I apologize, that, that's the only thing I got highlighted.
And C was actually discussed at the last meeting, that, because we talked about not requiring both departments to use any one particular vendor, but.
Hold, hold it, we're, we're sp- we're mixing. So.
Go John.
John was on a different point, which I don't think is, is in this contract at all. So is there, is there a section Brandon, in this contract that outlines anything to do with hazmat? It's in a different title or a different provision?
I'm gonna take a look.
It i- it is in here somewhere and it all goes to the town. And, and it's broken up a bun- uh, in accounts. I just forget where it's.
I don't see the.
It's in here, I know it is, because we, we changed it.
Um, so that would be under section 4.2e?
4.2e.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. Do you see that John, under the new one?
Yep.
4.2e?
Well, that, that's gonna bring me up to another complaint of not seeing stuff till the night of the meeting. Um, I looked on our town website and this wa- the only thing that was on there was the agenda. So there wasn't even a chance to review it other than what I was going from, from our last meeting. But you're right, from the notes from the last meeting, that was changed around, and some of the lettering changed because of it.
Yes.
Yep. I like that.
Well, it do- but it doesn't make the, it doesn't make the town grab the money. It, it says deposit it into the fire reserves.
Right.
For use for fire. I mean, I mean, how hard is that to not?
But what it doesn't, what it does eliminate is the 75% going into a kitty where.
Yes.
One department or both departments can say, our money, do what we want, now we own it. And that's, that is where a lot of this fundraising money numbers have, have come from.
If this, you know, if that went, if that, you know, and I'm just reading ahead here. So if that was in a contract that is not signed by either department, I think that that specific, uh, structure of that wordage could be put into our, uh, another town policy governing town equipment.
We, we have our hazmat, uh, policy, and, and that wordage, that 7525 may still be in there.
Oh, I'm sure it is. And that's the contract that's in effect?
Not on a contract, that there's a hazmat ordinance.
Yeah, so, but that has been adopted by us now, and it's not changed. It's kinda like the opt-out policy. It's still there unless it's amended. So if, it, what I'm saying is, let's say for some reason that this contract, I think we can, I think we can change some things on our own. Um, it, it'll be bold, but do it. I mean, it's, it's, it, for the town-owned machinery, in, in a, in a general sense, um, um, when it's, when it's being used in, in, in any event, let's say, well, we did this during Irene. We went to Cavendish with some trucks and machinery, and then we got reimbursed on an hourly rate through FEMA for that service. So it's not just, it's not just for fire, um, that we've done this in the past. Um, so we could make it broad. Now, what I'm saying is, if we don't get this total agreement in totality and do that, we can break out and talk about our policy in regard to what we charge.
I guess my point is that the, this has to, the contract has to agree with the ordinance.
Yes, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Go ahead.
On the ha- on the hazmat, uh, question is, as you said, for town-owned vehicles.
Yes.
Obviously the vehicles on either e- either side, uh, that department owns. And if there is a hazmat incident where we're generating a bill, and it's only pertaining to, um, town-owned equipment, but then the town is paying for, uh, all the maintenance, all the fuel, um, all the insurance regarding those, uh, department-owned trucks. Um, I think that that's an issue that would need to be resolved too.
I, I, I don't think that's what it says here though, is it?
No.
To offset the cost of fire service, all truck build hazmat reimbursements shall be remitted to the town. Doesn't say just for town trucks.
No, I'm saying that this contract, it was stated, this contract doesn't go through, that you would need to.
Oh.
Read.
Oh, I got, I'm sorry. I, I got you Josh, I'm sorry.
Um, and also on John's, uh, on 4.2, on the, um, the other, um, the other thought of why we were trying to maybe do a contract service or something. Uh, don't, don't forget that for us, uh, I have to find time, either I have to get up earlier, um, to bring these vehicles to, uh, engine machine to get the pump fixed, or to town line, or wherever they have to go, drop them off, figure out a ride, how to get back home. That's all, that's all coming, that's all time that's, uh, that the volunteers of, of each department are, are doing to get these vehicles, uh, to different places. Um, so I, I have said in the past that honestly, if the town, if, if the vehicles are owned by the town, um, then if they have to go somewhere, shh, do you, do you not agree that the town should be figuring out a way of getting those there instead of having us as volunteers to, uh, try to figure that out?
Yep. Yes.
That's not what it says though, in 4, 4.2c. That's nothing to do with what it says. It just wants to sign a service agreement with one.
One.
One person. So it has nothing to do with getting the rig there or back, you can bring it wherever you want.
It does, it does say in the second sentence, to go out to bid. Uh, doesn't say the terms of the bid, or it doesn't say anything. It just says that you'll, you'll let one vendor.
He's talking about who's gonna drive it there.
Yeah, I think get rid of 4.2c altogether, and then if they need assistance from getting there or getting back or whatever.
Yeah.
Then cross that bridge.
Yeah, I mean, the, the, but the town highway crew does the same thing with the trucks when they gotta go places.
Yeah.
They gotta go with a pickup to drop off the wheeler.
Yeah.
They got, they gotta bring it to whoever for warranty or whatever.
It's not a new concept.
No.
And that's gonna become more pronounced as we extend warranties.
Yes, or, well, but we did have the new one where they come to us, but you gotta pay for that.
True.
Yep. Any other things in the contract you wanna look at tonight? I mean, we're not even gonna get into the budget, I guess, because we're already like almost 9:30 again. What time is it?
9:19.
Is there anything else that needs to be changed on this? Needs to be changed?
Um, no. We gotta get that, we gotta do that add. The biggest part was I think 2.1 on the, on the services.
I agree. Should we also note the change that we made to section 8.4 enforcement, because that is new?
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Go ahead.
For, I was under the assumption from our last meeting in Scotty that we would, we were gonna get the contract earlier than, than just receiving it tonight, uh, for us to review it. Uh, so we, we would need some time, um, to, to review this again. There is a couple of tweets, um, that we will probably be, um, bringing back to Brandon, um, before. So I don't know what is, obviously, uh, we're coming up on that, on that date for, uh, the December, I think was the 7th or something, um, to, to sign. Uh, but, uh, we, we definitely had, I, I thought we were gonna maybe try to get this a couple of weeks ago, uh, with, with that last meeting to try to review.
We, you know, the, I, I have no problem with, with letting you take this. Uh, we do have that, you know, I'll call it tentative date. We do have a meeting on, what is it, December 5th or 7th? When is the next meeting?
Monday.
Yep.
December 7th.
7th.
7th, yep.
7th.
Um, I know there was a date that was originally given that we wanted to have a contract, at least gone through with this board. Um, I think we're getting much, much closer, um, whether we agree with it or, I don't know. That's where it's going.
Brandon, refresh my memory, when was 8.4 added? Is that but per consensus of the previous meeting we had? I don't remember seeing that until right now.
No, this, this came up following, um, following that last meeting, after, after the executive session. Uh, this is a conversation Brandon and I had, and we created this. So it's, it's here for your review.
Hmm. Wow, we're, we're disciplining a member that we have no control over.
Well.
Other than.
I, I guess, I don't know about that, but I, I don't know what to think about this, but, but I will say this. I mean, th- th- both departments are working, when they respond to a call, on behalf of the town of Weathersfield. They're covered by Workman's Comp. Now, I mean, we, we may debate about whether somebody is fully or not fully or whatever, but they still are. They go through training, they put on uniforms that say the town of Weathersfield, the trucks say. Everything to do with Weathersfield is on that stuff. Um, and that's why when something happens, that they don't really look at the departments, they look at the town. But they do this in every town, it's not just generic to the town of Weathersfield, it's every town. So I suppose you could say, in this case, that I don't know, I don't happen to know what policies or rules or regulations that you, or state statute that you would violate and who would determine that violation. That would be an issue.
It's not violating their own SOPs, it's basically a Weathersfield.
Yep, a policy.
Right.
And I don't know what policy that would be, I don't know what rules.
Alcohol, drugs, I mean, that, that.
Well, that's an interesting.
That would be even worse.
That's an interesting concept, because who, I don't know, you know, I don't know who determines whether or not somebody is not fit to be on the scene or not, on behalf of the town or using the town. That would be an officer on the scene, not us.
Yeah, I feel like we can't tell a private organization that we're dominating somebody from there.
Yeah.
I think we just can't do that.
They do have to furnish from time to time though, uh, licenses and everything to be able to drive, because we are the insurers.
That's supposed to have been done last January. I have no idea if it got done or not.
I don't know how technical that gets, like who.
It's basically you send a thing to DM, uh, DOT and, and they come back clean or they don't come back clean.
Yeah, but who determines on what timetable? So like if I go out, if I'm a volunteer and I go out and get DWI tonight, and I don't, and I don't report it until.
We, no, we had a policy where if you had a moving violation or.
Your duty was to report?
You had to, you're required to inform the town within.
Okay, I don't know.
Okay, so you're required to inform the town, and you don't do it.
Yeah.
Now what?
Or you're officer.
Okay.
I don't know.
See.
Well, by the sounds, we'll be very angry and we'll write you a letter.
We're angry.
And I don't know.
It all goes back to a municipal fire department where you actually have some teeth, but.
I'm curious to know what, if Josh had anything that he was willing to put out tonight for what he was thinking of tweets before we put this to bed? Cause that's where we're going, it's gonna get dragged out again, right?
Yeah.
Uh.
What sections?
There was, there was one section, uh, with, and I had this discussion with, uh, Brandon, um, with this new liaison, um, is we talked about the, uh, speediness of information between us and the town. Um, there is, over the last couple of months, um, it hasn't been very good. So we wanted to make sure that that was addressed. Um, the EMS response, um, there, we will be presenting, um, a letter to Brandon, um, this week, that will probably be on your next agenda, um, of discussion in that, with hopefully clearing, clarifying and, um, making it a little bit more simpler on that earlier discussion. Um, there was two other things that I can't think of where it, I had, um, that, that are just smaller, uh, no- nothing major.
So as a whole, they would find this acceptable with a few small changes? Just trying to get a read in the room. So as a whole, they would find this acceptable with a few small changes? Just trying to get a read in the room.
I mean, as far as from us, I mean, obviously we, this contract is, was more or less generated by us and Brendan from the beginning. And, and then, other than the last meeting we had with some, with the concerns from the Scotty on, on a couple of different things, but I think for the most part, um, those were, we talked about those and those were pretty well put to bed from our last meeting. So yeah, we're, I, we're, I would think we're, we're pretty, pretty darn close with this.
Somebody give me the time.
9:30, 9:27.
Do, do people wanna take up the budget? Do you wanna go, um, do you want to adjourn? What do you wanna do? We have, we have a little, we have some warrants to do. We don't have any warrants. I see a list here. We don't have any bills. Okay. I'm just looking down on the agenda.
Start at 6:30. I'd like to adjourn.
Yes.
Move we adjourn.
Non-debatable motion.
But, but there can be room for discussion, Mr. Vice Chair. Which would be me. Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. Is there any discussion? Yes. I wanna remind people.
White of order.
Somebody, somebody arrest him. The clerk. Can the clerk control the. I wanna remind people that, that we, for the agenda then for the 7th is going to be the finance report of fire, the budget for fire that's coming up that we would have done tonight. And so we, we need to make some motions, just I'm asking people to think about this, for the next meeting because, as you all know, we have other things that fill up the agenda for the next meeting. So.
Should, should we put the finance sorta at the top?
I don't know, because I don't know what's gonna be on the agenda. If there's anything else that's a little more. We are gonna start taking up the budget presentations of other things in the town. So.
I feel like this is gonna keep getting pushed on and on and on until we finally say, this is what we're giving you, yes or no.
I think we're just about there.
Yeah, just about there.
Yes.
I, I'm, I'm not gonna.
Motion been made and seconded to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.